...the curriculum. Neanne, roll call.
Ms. Cassianus?
Present.
Ms. Gailey?
Present.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Serving as Ms. Capola, Mr. Ford and Mr. Sadoway.
According to the agenda, we're welcoming an update on social emotional learning curriculum from Carolyn Troy and Tina Hifmanagel. And I look forward to hearing this because I'm being very mindful today.
Oh.
That's right.
I'll just say one thing quickly. I was trying to think of a blurb for how to start. There's something sort of short that might summarize what it is that we're trying to do in real life very quickly, but there is not really a short way to summarize the importance of social emotional learning. And I had the opportunity to be at a meeting today to sort of re-energize the whole group that was there and just really thinking about social emotional learning is not something that fits into a particular formula or rubric. That it's something that we know is important for students and that we know has to be embedded into the fabric of all of our schools. And that we know that when that's done, we will have students that are inspired and engaged and learning the skills that we feel and that they feel and families of whom they feel are important for them as learners and in community and in relationships and in life. And so when I think about it, it excites me to think about this presentation because it's making sort of an intentional and deliberate move towards choosing a curriculum. And in doing so, really valuing that work and seeing how it is seamless with academics. So I'm excited. So thank you, Tina.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. So my job tonight is to present you with an update on the SEL curriculum plan that we have done so far. And I'm kind of taking you backwards and then bringing you into the present. You all have a copy of a PowerPoint presentation that if our technology was working, we would have up on the board. But we're going old school and we are emulating what all the teachers are doing this week and doing so wonderfully because they're going old school. They're presenting their paper projects and so forth. And there's been chart papers in the school. And so we're going old school. So I invite you to follow along with your PowerPoint. And you know what? Really, we wish that we could have printed this on. It's supposed to be the snazzy blue. You got it in kind of gray. And I just want you to know it's going to be far superior, but it is what it is now.
We read it.
All right.
We all saw it on the PowerPoint.
Okay. You didn't see it on the PowerPoint.
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right.
We appreciate the savings in color ink as well.
So our job is to present you with the update. So just briefly, SEL involves teaching students social emotional competencies that will equip them with the skills to be effective student, citizen and worker in our society. The five social emotional learning competencies are self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And our goal also for this presentation is to inform the school committee regarding the progress of the SEL planning committee to date. The phase one, we did it. We identified the project and developed a budget. School year 17, 18, LPS leadership identified that the district was in need of an SEL resource for grades K through five. And in December of 2017, Deputy Superintendent Kimberly Powers directed the curriculum department to begin this effort. I was humbled and excited to be chosen to chair the SEL curriculum planning committee. And phase two was that we were preparing and planning this work. And so we gathered a team together. And you have a list in front of you of the team. It was Irene Cowdell. It still is. These people are still working on the effort. Irene Cowdell, Principal of Ingalls, Amanda Campbell, Program Specialist for ELE, Brian Fay, an administrator, Jacqueline Gallo, our Assistant Director of Curriculum Instruction for Early Childhood Ed, Mike Geary joined us, Assistant Director of Curriculum for Instruction and Health and Wellness, Sarah Hawkins, one of our grade one teachers out of Cobbett, is on the committee, Brittany Hawkman, a school social worker, myself, Program Specialist for Parents and Family Engagement, Tricia Johnston, one of our SACs, Julie Lavender, health teacher, Jessica McLaughlin, you all know Jess, she's Deputy Administrative Special Ed, Deborah Regerio, Deputy Superintendent, was also in the committee, and Nancy Takis Conway, Principal of Fallon. These 12 joined together in January and started this process. We entered into phase two. We established our timeline. And at the time, I was tasked with that school year. And so we were working from January till June 2018. And we chose the CASL guide. CASL is the, it's like the bible for social emotional learning resources. And you vet any, any resource you're looking at through the CASL guide. It's out of University of Chicago. And it stands for, CASL stands for the Collation for Academic, Social and Emotional Learning. And so we chose, it wasn't really a choice. It's the only solid guide that you would use as a rubric to evaluate materials from. And training materials were prepared for the group. And we entered into, and we're still in phase three right now, our SEL committee work. What we engaged in was doing the educational activities to effectively understand so our committee would all understand and be on the same page what SEL was all about. We were digging into the CASL rubric so that we would really understand it. We developed an SEL questionnaire for our principals because we wanted to assess what SEL work was going on. Because as you know, SEL work has been going on. Teachers have been helping children to, you know, make healthy decisions and grow in their social awareness and learn about their self-management. This is not new under the sun, but as far as a content and really organize and drilling down and being specific about SEL. So we wanted to get a sense of what different principals and schools were doing. So we had a survey. I'm sorry. I didn't think that I was going to feel nervous, but I am.
No, 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 no. We're excited. No, you got it.
You're great.
And then, so we reviewed programs. We dug into CASL. We were reviewing the programs. And we were making some side-by-side comparison of the programs according to the rubric. And the committee then met with our brand-new Executive Director of SEL, Carolyn Troy. She joined us, I think it was late May. And we kind of brought her up to speed where we were. And we had to wait excitedly until she joined us in July. But we wanted to bring her, introduce her to the team, to her. And then we started with our vendor presentations. And we are in that process now. We have not completed this process. We're looking at three vendors. And we've had our first vendor presentation by caring schools. So we're also, but we're still in this process. So the last page was, you know, phase four, but we're not there because we haven't completed phase three. So that's really me bringing you up to speed as to where we have been. If there are any questions or thoughts that you might have, it's just to overview where we've been so far.
Ms. Cassianus?
I don't know who we have. Okay. So thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate that. Very informative. I appreciate having it in advance as well. I was able to take a look at it beforehand. So for, I have a question regarding phase two for the team itself. How were the members selected? And I like to see that, was there a criteria that you were looking for while you were selecting the team, like putting the team together?
There wasn't a written criteria, but when I was tasked with this, I was consulting with Kim. I was consulting with my supervisor at the time, Deborah Geri. And I brought Mike Geary from the curriculum team and Jackie Gallo. And it was the curriculum team selecting names of people that we know have been kind of in the trenches doing the work. I think about Nancy Conway and all the work she does in social emotional learning at the Fallon. I think about, we wanted a SAC. And we were interested in Tricia's present perspective. So we were trying to get a teacher, some administrators, people that are, that were kind of known to do the work. Ryan Fay was part of the wraparound zone. Do you remember the wraparound zone years? And there was a lot of SEL work that had gone down. So it was kind of getting recommendations from, from people.
Well, that's actually what I want to highlight is that you did an incredible job putting together a lot of really strong experts. Nancy Conway is remarkable. I've seen her live. I've been to Fallon. I've been there numerous occasions for work. And I've seen some of the incredible, the things that go down over there. It's amazing. I'm happy to see that. And just for phase three, what were some of the results from the SEL questionnaire? Did you get results? Was that, were you guys able to process some of those?
I don't have the materials in front of me, but yes, we were able to take the, the survey from the 26, no, it was elementary, focusing on elementary. The principals brought back that they were working on PBIS, that they had social skills groups, that there were just, you know, core value programs going forward, character education programs, literacy, books that had, books that have content from SEL has been woven into some of the BLA work. We were getting a variety of things, but not really what we saw was that, hmm, we don't have universal practices and we want to work toward that. So people are doing a lot of amazing things based on the passion of the building leaders. But, so there's a lot going on, but we really felt like, and then the principals were writing in, missed, we missed second step. I don't know if you recall, but second step was, and has been in the past, the social emotional learning curriculum through the district. But we sort of fell away from that with training and fidelity. But many of the principals wrote in, we miss having a specific skill-based curriculum like second step. They gave that feedback. But I didn't, I don't have the analysis of the survey here. It's just from memory.
Thank you.
Ms. Gailey.
Great presentation. I mean, we have to, as educators, know how to just pick up the ball and go when things do not always go well. My, my concern right now is the middle school and the high school, how long till we will be able to work with SELs? I had a constituent talk to me yesterday about an incident with his son in a middle school. And he's very concerned. And I said, we're working on things like that in our school district. We're, we're working on SEL and please watch tonight. So, you know, Carolyn, do you have any idea about when we would be? I know it's, we're getting this in, but like, there's also that need in the middle and high school, so.
Yes, this is focused on K-5, but we're already looking at exploring resources for middle and high school as part of our goal for next year.
Perfect. Thank you. That was all. You did a great job, but I'm going to look at the book now.
Mr. Nicholson?
Thank you. And just echoing my colleagues, thank you for the presentation. This is great. This is exciting. As you've laid out in, in the presentation, this is something that we've not talked about for, for a few years. And also something that we recognize that a lot of schools were, were doing in some way or another. So I think that's really helpful. You know, I think, would it be possible to share the summary of the analysis for the, of what you found from the principal questionnaires with us in the future? Is that?
Sure. One of the things Carolyn has this hope, and we hopefully it'll be very soon, but we want, there needs to be a full presentation of SEL, you know, just what it is and what the definition will be in the LPS. So I don't necessarily want to speak to that, but we're here kind of just to kind of bring you up to speed about where we are in the selection of a resource. So that's almost like a bigger piece. But getting that, I know, like, we just need to dig up the, the survey and take a look at it again. I have, I'd have to brush it off because we're going over a year ago that we did that piece. So I think when Carolyn came on board, I shoved a whole bunch of files in her office and I haven't revisited that. But we can, we'll dig that up and get that to you.
Got it. And then is the expectation that one of the three vendors will be selected this spring in anticipation for the fall or, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Great.
And be, and be able to get the budget.
Okay. And is that sort of selection process, is that, are, is that drawing on some of the curriculum selection that we talked about at the, either the last meeting or before about sort of the way we're getting feedback from teachers and so on and so forth and that kind of thing? Great, great, great. Thank you.
Just one more. Just to, just clarify. So for the vendors, so part of the selection process, who's going to be part of the final decision-making for the vendors?
The vendors are asked to come up to give presentations to the SEL committee.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we talk as a committee and kind of at that point, we'll kind of see what we think of both the presentations, the pros and cons, and what seems to best align with the district's needs.
And does, would, Patrick, would you later make the recommendation to the committee? And is it possible to get the price tag before that?
Yes.
So we can know all three price tags and to kind of weigh it out? I think as a committee as a whole, we'll kind of analyze what that looks like?
Yeah. Ms. Gailey.
So this is one.
That's one.
One book.
Yes.
So are there others? You said there was three, I think.
Yes. That's the sample from caring schools community. And then you also have a copy of the sample sent by Open Circle and a copy of the sample sent by the 4R program. So you should have three sets of materials in front of you, samples from each of the programs.
Thank you. And can we use?
Caring Schools is the only one that's in like a KitKat format. You really like that. Kit format.
It's more impressive. But you, you definitely are the experts on these, so I was just curious. So this would be one, the gratitude.
Open Circle.
Open Circle. And then the 4Rs. So we, we could take these home and look through them before we made our vote or whatever. And that would be perfect. I totally appreciate this. You don't know, to be able to look over things and process is, it means the world to me. So thank you.
Anybody else?
I told you.
Great. You know, I, I think we, we, as you can see, this is something we've talked about for a while. And so it's really exciting to see a robust process about making it actually implemented. I think, you know, we all know that all the needs that our students have in their, in their home lives, after school, and the way that they learn. And to have this sort of formal way, you drawing from breast packages to address that, I think is exciting for the district. Thank you.
Well, he made me think of one thing. When we first got on in 2015, Mr. Nicholson and I went to a statewide mass association, a school committee meeting. And we sat down, we were writing what is the needs and what the needs are and what children needs all across the state. And I was thrilled to have you here, Tina, come aboard. And then I was even happier, you know, to have our own SEL person. So I'm very happy and grateful. And I just wanted you to know that Jared and I have been looking into it for quite a long time. And we're happy you're here. Thank you.
We're impressed that we're in a district that cares enough about the students and the families to care about their lives through six weeks, the whole time. And it's exciting to, I get to support the team of social workers and Carolyn is supporting me in that. And this is just a wonderful opportunity to grow this work and of taking care of children.
You know, it's funny, I'm taking classes now because I'm getting certified again. But in a lot of the classes that I am taking, it's very important. And I always knew that. The relationship you have with a student, and if you have a healthy relationship with your student and you know something about them, then they, you get a lot more out of you. And I guess that's what my students used to call Gailey's World because they all felt safe in my class. And it was a wonderful feeling and I loved them all. So I'm so glad this is coming down. Thank you. Any questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Here is...
I'd like to please call the order, the policy subcommittee meeting and a committee of the whole meeting. Call, please.
Mr. Ford?
Present.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Mr. Sadoway?
Present.
Observing Ms. Cassianus, Ms. Coppola, and Ms. Gately.
Thank you. So, on the agenda, we have three items having to do, first, with the foster care policy, the policy for education opportunities for students and military families, and the attendance policy. The foster care policy and policy for education opportunities for students and military families comes from the administration, who have worked to make sure those policies are in compliance with state and federal law. Do you want to speak to those at all?
Just quickly, to say that there's no wiggle room with these. Many of the policies that exist are, that are in your packet relative to students in foster care and students in military families, we already embrace, but this must be a feature in the district policy, so it is before you now.
Okay. Does anybody have... Yeah.
We have our policies online, and it looks like they're somehow organized in some fashion. I don't see where it references where this would be applicable to, or where it would be inserted to. And I see that it's referencing and giving a legal reference as to DESI and their ESSA of 2015, so I see where the language is coming from. I just want to make sure it's put in a place that it's relevant.
Right. I think these should be in our student handbook, which is where a lot of the district policies live. And frankly, this talks a lot, both policies talk a lot about the rights that students have who are either in foster care or in military families, and I think an easy place for them to access that would be in the handbook.
Okay, and this does reference certain procedures, just so you understand, because normally we vote on the policies and procedures are something that the superintendent would then apply, but obviously, it's still on, and we're just using the language, so.
Great. Anybody else have questions on the foster care policy or the military family policy?
No. I make a motion to accept the policy for students in foster care and the policies for educational opportunities for students and military families as presented, with that one change that we discussed that says that this was adopted by us on a particular day.
Okay. Call, please.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadoway?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so the last item is the attendance policy, and this is something that we have been discussing. The district has an initiative this year to boost attendance, has been doing wonderful work throughout the schools in working with students and teachers and families and social providers to boost attendance, and it came to our attention that we could evaluate a policy change in support of that offer with regard to attendance and the rules around attendance. And the administration convened a group and has some recommendations. Is that correct?
Yes, after the school committee had noted that we needed, you needed to look at this policy, we talked as a district senior leadership and compiled a group of guidance counselors, vice principals, district administrators, to come together, to put together a guidance document for you, certainly not dictating what you should put in the policy, but just giving you some guidance on the possible impact of certain decisions on the schools, the different options out there. We looked at a variety of other districts' policies. The way we kind of structured the meeting was we looked at our own policy and what did we think should stay, and then we looked at other schools' policies to see what were in those policies that we liked, didn't like, and I had two working groups that were, or three, actually, working groups that were looking at these, and charted out some of the big ideas that they wanted to bring to the table into this guidance document, and then we shared out as a group and talked through them to come up with this one document as just some guidance for you in developing a new policy.
Just a question? Sorry. So I see reference to Chelsea, Rockton, Salem, and Worcester. Do you have those policies?
They were sent to Mr. Nicholson.
Oh, okay.
Did you get them as well?
I forwarded them to you and John.
You did?
But I can make copies.
Okay. So, this is really just roadmap of where you really...
Yes, I mean, you all need to create the policy.
Yeah, no, I agree.
We don't want to dictate to you, however, this will give you some idea of what the schools, the people who deal with the attendance issues firsthand, some suggested kind of language or possibilities that you could add.
So, if it's in here, it's a good, so this grade recovery earn back option, you guys feel strongly that that should be something that we...
There was a lot of discussion about that. We actually have few members of the team are here. Matt Wilkins from Lynn English Guidance Counselor, Eva O'Malley from the Curriculum Department, Executive Director of Curriculum, Fred Gallo, the Vice Principal of Tech. Am I missing anybody? Tom Strangie is here, of course, the principals gave some feedback as well. So, they are here, actually, to answer any questions that you might have. I asked them that if they could be here to come, in case you had questions.
Definitely. Is there anyone that wants to speak up about the grade recovery and where your thoughts are on that?
Can I be first?
Of course.
So, I just want to point out, there's information here, but I just want to highlight that the marked, the big change is around the number of days, right? So, in the current policy, it's seven, if a student has seven unexcused absences...
In a term.
In a term.
Yes.
It's an automatic F. That's been brought down to four. If it's stated seven, you exceed the threshold for the state's definition of chronically absent. The making it four brings it beneath that threshold. That's an important change. The other one is, you know, there's a recommendation there for students receiving a D minus instead of an F. That means that if you exceed four, or four or more unexcused absences in a term, the best grade you can earn in that class, or your class is, is a D minus. You know, Mr. Wilkins, we have folks from the schools here, I think it would be really hard, the earn back is a logistical challenge. You know, you've got caseloads, guidance counselors have large, large caseloads, and we don't have a, there's no feature in e-schools that would, you know, allow us to flag and like go back. So this would be all human intervention. I just don't think, respectfully, that there's the capacity to do that sort of monitoring. So if there's a clear message to students that says, you know, the expectation is that you attend every day, which is the attendance initiative, and if by chance you, you know, have four or more unexcused absences, the best you can expect is a D minus, and if you didn't, and that's if you were actually passing the course. If you were not passing the course, then you would fail. I feel pretty strongly, although I will respect whatever direction the committee decides to go, that the earn back pieces are really hard to manage.
And I just want to add to that, that there was also a lot of conversation about just even with lowering the number of days they can be out, is adding more work for the guidance counselors and vice principals, because they monitor this attendance and they meet with kids that are, you know, that are edging on that number, and this is going to limit the amount of time that they have to work with a student to change it, because we're lessening the days that they can touch kids, right? So they're concerned about that. That's going to add more time and effort on their jobs as well, just by lowering the number.
Well, I think that, sorry, I think that, I understand where you're saying the human intervention would be an issue with regards to the earn back option, but in here, we're talking more an appeal process, so I have a feeling that it's going to increase the appeals, because now the absences are four per marking here. So, people won't necessarily be happy with getting a D minus because of the four absences, and may or may not appeal that, and then that's utilizing more of the time of whomever is in charge of the attendance appeal process. Will that be the attendance officers that we have?
No, that's typically the principal. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Strangie?
Yes. So if a kid was out four times or more and he got a D minus, as in now, if he gets a F, is he going to do a recovery? The onus is on the child, and they have to be at some responsibility. So between them and the teacher to say, I'm here to make up the work that I missed, they would do that, and they would give that grade to the guidance counselor, and they would change the grade. The kids would understand that. Lowering it to F is a good solution, because even our best students know that if you can be out seven days before you fail, all take six days. At the end of the quarter, I can attest to it, they're like, how many days do I have an absence? How many days do I have an F? Oh, I got three more days, and maybe it's taken those vacation days. So we stop that. Kids who are chronic anyway, that four is going to have little impact. If anything, it'll give them a boost, and if they're actually passing, they can get that D minus, and so they won't be failing, because they're going to have that opportunity. If you want to make up that work, you can bring it back to your original grade.
Ms. Paul?
I'm not, I'm not really sold on this attendance policy, especially where we just adopted one that you're doing that has no absences. But with a policy like this, and if kids hear the four days of absences, what do you think is going, is that going to increase dropout rate?
I don't think so. I, so later on this evening, you're going to hear about the strategic plan, and one of the core values featured in it is high expectations. We expect kids to come to school every day.
That's understandable, but you know...
And so, but I also think that our policies have to also reflect our values, and if we're saying it's okay for you to miss six days unexcused, that's not a reflection of high expectations, in my opinion. It's pretty low. And frankly, if you go to other urban districts, you will not find a number that high. I taught in Boston when I was at Brighton High School, if a student missed five days and passed, the principal wanted to know, what was going on in your classroom that a student could miss that many days and still pass? The theme there was high expectations. That's really what we're trying to drive here. I don't think that sending a message about students attending every day and lowering the number of days on which they can be, a number of unexcused absences, is going to drive the dropout rate. I don't see that correlation. As Mr. Strangie said, the students who are already struggling around attendance, this is not really addressing those students. We have other interventions to address their needs. This is sending a message district-wide to our secondary students that we want you in school every day, and if, if you, you know, bringing it down to four absences, even if a student, you know, four absences each of the quarters of the school year, they still wouldn't be chronically absent by the state's definition. So, that's the thinking here, and, you know, this is a recommendation for you all to, you know, sort of react to and make decisions on, but I think we heard loud and clear from you, and we don't disagree, that seven is just way too high. Please.
Ms. Strangie?
For those kids...
Can he come to the mic?
Yeah.
Because people are out there, and they don't want to hear, they can't hear.
Just as an added thing, kids who are struggling with MCAS that we do appeals, so these kids who feel they can take their 28 days off a year are ineligible for us to do an appeal, because the state requires you have to be in so many days. So if you're lowering it down to that four, and they decide to burn those days, if we need an appeal, they're still within the guidelines, and we can do that appeal. So that's another benefit. And again, those kids who are chronic, you could have two days, 30 days, it's not going to really affect them, and they're kids that we have to focus in a different direction on. This is just to get those kids who think that they're entitled to these personal days that you don't.
Other questions? Ms. Gately?
In the policy, will there be like an exception, like, I'm just wondering, where Mrs.?
What?
No, I understand, but like where Mrs. Coppola, we're looking at this paper right now, right? So where Mrs. Coppola is wondering about the amount of times, like, she works with children, and sometimes children who have children, their children get sick, and then they have to take off time, with their children have to take off time, and then they get it, so they're taken out a long period of time. I don't see where that's written in here, so they could be excused.
Well, part of the policy already has excused absences and unexcused, and...
Right.
Mrs. Coppola's called our school several times about kids, and we've never had an issue, and say, yeah, we'll take care of that, so that's not a problem.
I just want to make sure that...
I mean, in the policy, there's about doctors, religious holidays, court appointments automatically get excused with the documentation, so that's not a problem there.
And actually, who she's referring to are really covered under Title IX, as parenting and pregnant.
And I'd like to just note that on this guidance document, there is a bullet that asks to think about clarifying what an excused absence is versus an unexcused, because I'm not sure that there's consistency on what those are.
Is that why there's a question mark on the second page where it says unexcused absences?
No, it's the, it's on the first page, the second bullet from the bottom.
I see that. Can you go to the next page, and there's just a question mark where it says unexcused absences?
Oh. I think, I think the, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I think the question mark is you all deciding what constitutes an unexcused absence. It came up multiple times in the conversation.
So anything that's not excused should be unexcused, right?
So like in the case of a student that you're referring to that has children, and the child gets sick, the child probably has to go to the doctor, you bring in a doctor's note that your child was sick, and I would think that potentially could be an excused absence.
Yes.
If they get sick, and they also have to go to the doctor, that would be an excused absence. Do you know what I mean? Like, there's ways to...
And our policy, and also all the sample policies, add definitions, so we can compare those when we make the final...
Yeah.
Mr. Cassellos?
So, I have a question. The current tardy policy, what has been done to address, so if kids are just chronically tardy, so kids are not absent, but they're coming in late, what are some of the...
I don't think we have...
...infractions? I said, I know it says other components to consider, but what are some of the...
I've been doing this for 22 years. If I find a cure for tardiness, I'm a millionaire. People, grown adults, they're late. We have kids who are late, and I know that the tendency is, well, let's make it, you know, instead of 7:55, 7:58, eight o'clock, and so when you do that, then they come in at 8:03. And I've always felt that we're going the wrong direction. We need to tell kids, school starts at 7:30, you need to be there at 7:45, they'll show up at 7:55, and they'll actually be on time. That's the reality of the situation.
So, just one question?
Mr. Sadoway?
So, I keep thinking back to what you've been telling us over and over again, that DESI doesn't see the difference between an excused absence and an unexcused absence.
Absence is an absence.
So we could go round and round about what is and what isn't, it doesn't impact what DESI sees, so...
But it would, it would impact the number of absences.
Of course, yes, yes. So I agree on that end. So, again, lowering it down to the four would at least help us with our data that's being transferred to DESI. That's where I see it. And obviously, with the ability to help these kids get back on track. I do like the suggestion, although Dr. Tulli doesn't like it, about the grade recovery earn back, and I like leaving the onus on the child.
And I like leaving the onus on the, the child to, to do the work.
Dr. Tulli.
Yeah, I, I just want to be clear. I'm not promising, I'm, we're theorizing that if you make a values-based statement about students attending school and, and you have a policy that reflects that value, then you're likely going to see a change. I'm not promising you that that's going to be the case. And it's not that I dislike the, the earn-back feature. I actually like that a lot. I like that philosophy of students having the opportunity, like, ah, made a mistake, slipped up, you know, but there's an opportunity for me to learn something and come back. I'm just saying logistically and then in reality, I, again, I'd like to hear from, I, I just think that would be really hard. And get messy.
But we already have credit recovery.
No, that, this is different.
It's a different, yeah.
So on, on that point, it looked like the other districts had this earn-back option. Do we know how the other districts implemented? Is it by?
I, I mean, I didn't contact the, the districts. I literally was just searching online for samples. I did not call them.
Okay. I can, I go to Northeast Conference Principals Meetings, we talk about different issues. And so various districts do, like, you know, again, it's up to the kid and they give them into the new quarter, you have two weeks to make up whatever work if you want this changed because we want you focusing on the present work, not necessarily the past. So they set a parameter, you got two weeks to do this and after that, that grade's going to stay.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, obviously this technology exists to be able to track something like this and, and to do it without too much of a burden. And I would hate for us to be making policy educational-type decisions because we haven't found a solution that is out there for, for technology in terms of tracking and, and monitoring in attendance. So maybe that's something we can take a look at as we are evaluating the different policies, what other districts are doing. Ms. Paul.
Strangie, do you have like a guesstimate of how many we're talking per quarter? I mean, we're talking 30, 40, 50?
Sorry, I do. So I asked, he's affectionately referred to as Josh Mo, Josh Moore, to do a three-year look back on attendance Fs. And I looked at the grades that are, you know, by research standards, the hardest in secondary, six and nine, the transitional years. And like, I don't have that data right before me, but during some quarters, it's triple digits, like over 100 attendance Fs. And, and at the lowest end, it was, you know, 60, 70.
District-wide.
District-wide. That's significant.
But again.
Especially given the research that, you know, if you fail one grade, if you fail one class, one quarter in grade nine, your chances of graduating in four years dips significantly. So I, I, I think it's a big deal.
I still agree with the reduction of the number of days because it's entitlement. They become entitled to six, they're going to take six.
I was just going to say, I'm only one of six guidance councils and I had 28 students who failed to do attendance last quarter. I'm only one of six. And like Mr. Strangie said, my big concern is that our population is changing and we're getting more newcomers in EL and they're forced to take the MCAS after being here for a year. And it's becoming more and more difficult to appeal their scores. Because of that, it's, it's a 95% attendance is one of the requirements. They can't be absent more than nine days the whole year. And so we've got to get them in here more because we're prevented from appealing many of them to do that. And then DESI's big push is career and college readiness. And if we're not teaching these kids that being in school on time every day is important, it's not helping them in terms of the whole, it's not helping us in terms of the whole career aspect, teaching them the responsibility of being there on time. And we, you know, we do lessons through the guidance curriculum that we develop and we focus on that. But having in the attendance policy, I think, would be more beneficial. Even like having a language from DESI that you have to have this in order for us to appeal your scores. This is DESI's career and college readiness initiative. Having that for students and parents to see upfront, I think, would be helpful. Because it's not just our district that's pushing this, the whole state.
We're not making this up. We are trying to adhere and comply to what the state expects of us.
Well, and again, thank you, Mary, for getting these to us. But some of these attendance policies are in-depth and they include language that I, I see that you're asking us to include in our policy. And I, and I agree. You know, I appreciate you all taking the time out and, and just shooting around ideas and, and beliefs based off of what you see and what you deal with. And I think that that's what's important. You know, we, we don't see what you see every day. You know, when you sit here and you say 28 Fs based off of attendance, that's, that's a big deal. And if we can just save a portion of that, that would, that would help that kid or those kids.
If any of them are saved, when I call them down and say, "We have the doctors, we have someplace official, then I can get notes in because they didn't bring them initially and then the numbers drop." But it's still a lot.
Obviously, the policy that was enacted in 2014 was definitely a great start. And I, I do believe that we need to look at what we need to, to do to improve it.
So just a question on the earn-back option. Did you get any feedback about what that process would, would look like from, from, from teachers and people that are giving the grades? In terms of like, you mentioned like do it within two weeks. Is that something that people would feel like would be a tremendous burden on top of their normal teaching load? Or something that they'd be open to?
The policy now is that if a child was out sick for a number of days, for whatever, if it was out two or three weeks and then behind, they get an incomplete grade. The policy is that you have two weeks to make up all that work that you missed to get that incomplete change to an original grade anyway. So we'll just go hand in hand with that.
I was talking with my colleagues. We thought it'd be good that if a child's absent, something's in the policy that says they have to make up their work or an assessment within like a week. Because the longer they wait, then the teacher has no way to measure their knowledge and to adjust things in the classroom if kids aren't doing well. Because some of these kids will wait forever to make, they'll come at the end of the quarter, "I want everything, I want everything I got to make up in two days." And it's impossible. And so if there was something in the policy to say, "Make this up by the teacher's next night back," that would, that would be helpful too. And it just puts it on the kid too. Like you've got to take responsibility for being out.
Okay. Ms. Paul.
I'd like to see the data, like if it's, there are certain subgroups that this affects in particular. It would give us an idea of, you know, who we, if, if there's a particular group that we need to work with, you know, with this.
Yep. On if the attendance Fs is felt more in certain subgroups than others?
Yes, yeah, exactly. You know, because I think this has some pluses to it, but I, I also don't, I think it needs to be studied longer before you.
I don't think we're voting, we don't have a policy to vote on.
We should, let's talk about next steps actually, because I think that's right. But there's, there's a couple items of homework that we have to pull that data. Maybe we can work with the, the secretary on contacting some of the districts that have earn-back options to find out how they do it. And then I know my colleagues are, receive the other policies that we looked at, so we can read those. But we're going to have to take a pen and paper here to, to draft a new policy. And I, and I think, and attorney of my house can correct me if I'm wrong, but as, we're working on the subcommittee, which is a body of three, so we couldn't do it with two people. Somebody has to write it themselves and then present it to the policy because two people could meet on this without, without violating an open meeting. Right? Because two would be a quorum of the subcommittee.
Subcommittee. You have to abide by the, so the open meeting.
Right, right. So one of us needs to draft a policy for us to, to, otherwise we're going to have to sit here and write it, and the three of us, and that would.
Each member could write their own policy.
Okay.
They share it at the meeting.
Yep.
I, I plan on writing something based off of what the suggestions were and what we've discussed.
Okay, great. Yes, Ms. Paul.
Do we also have input from the people in the schools that deal with this every day and to make sure that we don't miss?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think this, yeah, absolutely.
This is the input. This is the input.
No, I mean, as far as just when you're going over, just so we don't miss anything, you know. If you want to write it, you want to write it right.
Of course, yeah.
I mean, is there somebody on the guides document team that wanted to take a first pass at a proposed draft based on what we're?
I'm the only one here, so I have to.
Dr. Tulli.
I was actually going to suggest that. I mean, I, you can obviously approach this any way you want to. But if you'd like, we could come back with a draft of, of, of a policy and you can continue to pick it apart and, you know, add in what you want, take out what you don't. And, you know, I can get you the data, I can get you the data pretty quickly, actually. So you have that to bear on your, on your thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that would absolutely make the most sense. I think this, I think this guidance document is really helpful and, and hopefully was helpful for, for you and the team to get sort of our initial reactions. But, you know, in terms of setting this up for the best chance of success, having somebody who's been in it, take, take the pen, I think makes, absolutely makes the most sense. And then, and then following up on those other questions that have come up over the course of, of the, over the course of the night as well. That'd be great. And then you can share that to us in advance and too, and we could ask and answer your questions. Okay, great. Any other? Yes.
Why don't we just prepare to, we're, we're at the 11th next, yes? Just prepare to have that for, for that meeting.
Great. Thank you so much. Anything else?
No. Second.
All right, Mr. Stern.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Personnel Subcommittee Meeting and a Committee of the Whole Meeting. Roll call, please Nancy.
Miss Coppola.
Present.
Ms. Gayle.
Present.
Sari White.
Present.
Observing Mr. Castellanos and Mr. Ford, Mr. Nicholson.
And on the agenda is athletic trainer position posting for three jobs. Yes.
Just to give you some history, why, why this is in front of you. For a number of years, we've always contracted the services for athletic trainers. About two years ago, we had a company, we would go out and get quotes and receive quotes for this service as a contracted service. We received, prior to that, a local company called Advanced Physical Therapy, Joe O'Connor, if anyone knows him. He's a, you know, a resident of the city as well, great guy, has always had the contract. And he felt that it wasn't worthwhile to continue it, notified us. So we went out and received, tried to receive quotes. We received one quote from a company from out of town. They took on the contract and it, and last year on August 1st, they notify us that they want to discontinue the contract. And just so you understand why, the premise is that these are their folks and they work for us for a certain amount of hours. And then they would go back to the, that employer and, and fill in to get their 40 hours a week at the employer. So they worked for us probably about 30 hours, maybe 27, depending on what season is and what sports are going on. So the goal they have is to hope that if a child got injured and needed physical therapy, that they would hopefully go to their facility to get those treatments. We don't encourage the child to go anywhere. It's their choice if they want to go to any physical therapy company. That's up to them and their parents and their doctor to decide where they go. So what I felt is that the, the company was not getting those referrals, in essence, through the insurance companies where they're going to make up the difference, to put it, you know, simple to everybody. So we received on August 1st a letter from the company saying, "No, thanks, we're all done." And that's probably literally two weeks before fall sports starts. Not fair, I don't think, but legally they had the right to do it. They just have to give us 30 days' notice of cancellation. They did, and at that point, they were done. So I immediately picked up the phone and called Mr. O'Connor, who has been doing business with us in the past. And he graciously stepped in and said, "I will pick up the contract for this year. However, I'm not going to go forward in the future. You're going to have to most likely hire your own people." Okay? So things are going really well this year. And I, in January, I said, "Joe, is there any way you want to keep this relationship going?" And he says, "No." He says, "No," because at the same time, he still has to make up some hours with his people. And when they are typically, the hours that people come in, they're here, working for us. So they come in at oddball times and they're basically, he says, "I got them sitting around and there's no one in there in this office for them to work on." So he's paying people to kind of sit around his office. So he said, "You're going to have to do it yourself." So the job description in front of you is, I, I got some input from other school districts. I ran it by Mr. O'Connor, who reviewed it to make sure that we have all the right certifications listed here that they would be required to have, as well as he felt the hourly rate is very good for an employer coming in. We actually pay him more than that right now than this hourly rate because obviously he's a business. He has to make money on it and top of it. So this would actually save us money by going this way. And they would be able to report directly to our athletic people at the schools, our athletic directors, and be assigned. So I try to cover all the topics and duties that they would be required here. And the, the real difference is they would be working probably about 40 hours a week, except, and it's, again, it starts two weeks right around before Labor Day, because that's when the fall sports starts. They start coming in, like football starts and they got to go through the concussion protocols. That's all in here. They'd be responsible in monitoring that. And Mike Geary would work with training and make sure everything's on board. And they kind of do this now in a roundabout way, but they would be responsible and work with the athletic directors. I also had the athletic directors look at this for input as well. So we tried to get as much input as we can to make sure that everything they would be doing would be listed here. So since this position does not exist in the school department, I brought it forward to you for approval. And we would not post, and these jobs would start next August and it would be in next year's actual school budget. So through this June, we are covered with Mr. O'Connor. But after that, we're going to have to move in a different direction. So that's why I brought this before you. We have plenty of time. If there's more, if this can't be, if you feel that this draft and there are more questions, we can gladly continue to meet till we get something that's acceptable for everybody.
Ms. Gayle.
Kevin, I have a quick question. Do we pay more to Joe to service all three high schools than this would be to have one in each school?
Currently, we pay more than this hourly rate, yes.
So this would cover each high school to have an athletic trainer probably between the hours of 1:30, 3:30 to 8 o'clock, whatever the time the games go.
We are estimating 40 hours a week. And, but they, there are games sometimes and things on Saturday. So we want them there. So it's going to be up to like, you know, I, one of the athletic directors from English is here, Mr. Newton. I mean, he had input, so we talked about this. So there's going to be some scheduling. And scheduling could change every week depending on what is happening that next week. So we want, that's part of this job. It's got to be flexible. That's why it's an hourly rate. So we're going to say, "Today, you're working." But there's going to be pretty much a set hourly, you know, day. But it's pretty much season would drive it. And even during like the school vacation weeks, I mean, the teams are still practicing or playing. So there's going to be some of that, as well as there's some other duties they could do under the direction of the athletic director if there is a little bit of downtime while they're there. And I also, we also put on strength and conditioning because that's something that's really new, that we want to do health and nutrition and strength and conditioning with not just the athletes, but any student at the high school. We have weight rooms that we're trying to encourage people to come in and utilize. So it's not even just for athletes, it's for any student that wants to, you know, improve their own physical physique and, you know, do some health and nutrition, eat right, as well as, you know, maybe do some exercise program at that. And they could help direct that as well.
And one other thing, they, I'm just worried, like I'm just thinking about the cost. And it's like, we are paying right now in our budget more money than we would pay for three of these, one in each school.
This year we are because we, we are paying basically 40 hours a week and we're paying $40 an hour.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, Mr. Sari.
So I understand the hourly salary, but when you include benefits, it probably increases that slightly, would you say?
Well, what we do is the, the, obviously, if someone, currently now, if one of the, there's three schools. So if one of the folks are out sick for some reason, they haven't been, like, they don't get a substitute, we cover. So if there's an emergency, you know, the, like, if English High School is out with an athletic trainer, the LVTI person's probably the closest person that could scoot over and do it. Or if there's an emergency, they're, they're just going to call 911 at that point, which is available. So we don't do that. So as far as extra, there wouldn't be. So, we don't do that, so as far as extra, there wouldn't be extra people involved in filling in, so I wouldn't have to pay anything extra.
I'm talking about, you're saying that you pay $40 an hour now to Joe and his company, and we're only going to pay $32 an hour to this employee, but what I'm saying is, obviously, health insurance costs something.
That's correct.
Sick days, personal, benefits are more, so it may be roughly around the same amount, but it's not as though we, we have a company that's knocking on our door to come do this, so it sounds as though this is a necessity.
I, I see as a necessity, I don't see another option at this point. I have to offer a fair rate so we can get people to apply, and he believes that this is a rate that people will definitely apply. We have three people that work for him, I would assume, and I'm only assuming, they would probably apply, but this is open to anybody, because we want to get the best people possible. And I would agree, yes, the health insurance cost is not built into this, and there are no vacation days, so that's a good thing, because they're not going to work over the summer from June.
Oh, I see, that's three personal days.
So, it's just three personal days, but we don't backfill, so their salary is their salary, so, I mean, you know, they're getting their hourly rate for those days.
And, and what about overtime? You, you should have data of how, how much time these contractors are spending in these schools, so are we going to have an issue where we're paying a lot of overtime out for these people?
No, I, I believe right now, we're not, you know, we're paying, typically, that's like 32 to, you know, around 32 to 37 hours, depending on the season. So, I mean, it does have some flexibility if we don't have to, but obviously, we're trying to get these people so they have security and, you know, not working 20 hours this week, but next week, working 60, we don't want to be paying overtime. So, I, in dealing with the athletic directors, we all believe that 40 hours a week will be plenty of coverage, and they shouldn't have to deal with that.
It's an important job. You know, these, these student athletes are, 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 you know, they're practicing a sport or doing a sport or doing something under our view, so we, we need to have qualified people doing these, these jobs, so I agree that the compensation should match that as well.
Mr. Nicholson.
Thank you. Thank you for this proposal, and the, and the posting was well-written. I thought, the, the one suggestion I had is, could we, could we add something, I think this is something we've talked about in, over the last couple of years, that we've implemented in, given the issues that we're having around the country with the prescription of opioids, of adding something in here about pain management after an injury, like coaching or talking to kids about if they're prescribed pain medication, like what to do with that, what to, like, how to be careful in using it, how to dispose of it, stuff like that.
Like in paragraph 10?
Yeah, in paragraph 10, exactly. I think, I think we've done a training for pain management after an injury for coaches, and obviously, this would be a key person in implementing best practices on that.
I agree.
So, that was the only thing I had there.
That is a great draft. Athletic trainer positions are very valuable, I know there's regulations around that, I think we have to support our athletes, the athletic directors. I appreciate the input, too, that was gathered. I know Dick Nguyen very closely, he was one of our ADs at English High School, very valuable to the English community. I have a question for number 11. Would professional development be provided from us, or would they have to take the cost?
We're not sure about that, because, you know, that, Joe, Joe put that in there, O'Connor, as a recommendation, I'm not sure if we'd be responsible, something, we may up, I'm not sure if we can offer something, or if we'd have to reimburse them, it doesn't, at this point, it would be on them. They have to maintain their, all the certifications, just like I may maintain mine, and that's at my, my cost to maintain all the possible certifications, so I think, obviously, to stay up to date on all the practices would be on them at this point, unless we wanted to get into reimbursing them for those expenses with a dollar amount.
Okay, and what is the deadline? When, what do you plan to roll this out, so we can have this?
Well, tonight's a draft, I mean, that's why I wanted to just go through this, if there's some suggestions for changes, we can bring this back again, it doesn't have to be approved tonight, I will say that, this isn't rush, we want to give it, I just would like to get it out, I mean, we're only, we're still in eight, March, right, so, I mean, I would like to have it out in May, just so it's on the street, so we get, can go through the interview process and get people ready, so they'll be starting in August, because this would be a start date of August.
Is there any other questions at the table?
Just one more.
Yes, Mr. Sadaway.
Is there a requirement that we, we have at least one female, or, or, does that, is there any requirement that Desi or anyone sets that?
No, I, I believe we, do we have one now? Dick? No, we, we have in the past, had people in and out, I know we've had in the past, but I wasn't sure who's that, I wasn't sure who's that LVTi this year, I know.
When we have them.
Yeah. You do? Yeah, so I, I thought so, we have one now, it's, it's not a prereq, it's, obviously, through this process, we're going to hire the best three candidates we can get, that's the goal I want, I mean, I want to get the top three candidates, we can, if it's the current ones, they're always welcome to apply, but you can't say you're going to definitely get the job.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
I'm going to act as I'm passing this to you. So, on the number one, my concern is, I understand prevention, evaluation, treat, it's treatment and rehabilitation of injuries. What does that mean? Like, are you bypassing the students' doctors, or?
No, the treatment is, if, if a child twists their knee, they're going to put a bag of ice on, that's treatment, you're treating the, you know, the knee and maybe wrapping and gauze, you know, this is what they do now, some, like I said, this, Joe O'Connor, who owns Advanced Physical Therapy, you know, and I believe this is what we're doing now, if they come out to service, you know, if a child's hurt, says, "I sprained my ankle" or something, they would come out, assess it, there's things they would look at, and then, obviously, they're going to, if it's, needs to see a doctor, they're going to refer them right to their doctor, but in the meantime, they're going to probably put ice on it, maybe have that, I call that gauze.
Okay, so it's, it's not stating like you're coming, they're going to come back and do all kinds of treatment. When I'm, when I'm looking treatment and rehabilitation, I'm thinking of...
The only treatment is, in, in some cases, if you play a sport and if you're, you've had an injury, after practice, you may need to ice your knee again, they might give you the bag of ice to put on your knee at the end of practice or something of that nature, but it's not what a doctor would do, you're still going to be referred to your own doctor. And taping, like, taping ankles, like, football players have their ankles taped, they'll tape the, before the games and in practice, they'll tape them every day, so that's, that's covered, what we're trying to talk about.
Okay, and we have required of our nurses to get the teacher certification, is this a job that you think should also get the teacher certification?
They're not required under the current structure to have a teacher certification.
Okay, is this falls under, there's something in the state that is similar to this? Job description?
I don't believe there's any state, there, there, there's no state license, that you can see that the National Athletic Trains Association Board of Certification is required up the top, these are things that they currently have and are required to have, those are the, under the qualifications, what we have.
Okay, and then would this be open to our unions, I'd ask the attorney, you know, to invite them in as members of their union?
Well, they can always petition the union for entrance.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to table it for some more discussion and...
That's fine.
Yeah.
And we'll come back with something, what I'll do is, we'll get something on the pain management and put that into line 10, and we'll get this back to you, and then we can continue the discussion. As I guess, this doesn't have to be done tonight, I would just like, hopefully by May, we can kind of finalize this, so we can get this posted before the school year's over, and then start that process.
Okay, so there's a motion to table.
It was seconded by...
It was already seconded, so, sorry, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Ms. Gately.
Yes.
Sadaway.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. And...
All in favor, aye. Okay.
Adjourned.
Okay.
I love you.
Hold on, he's the man, hold on, I was, I was more curious.
So...
Welcome to the school committee meeting and I'd ask everyone to join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's tight, snug.
First on the agenda tonight, the minutes from the second special meeting on March 11th of 2019.
Take a motion to accept this minutes of the meeting for the second special meeting of the school committee on March 11th.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are accepted. Next on the agenda is presentations. And tonight, we're honored to present to the 2019 Lynn English Boys Basketball Division One State Championship are here.
Yeah, we'll say some words. I can barely see over all this. Got dark back there. Good evening, gentlemen. So, this group needs no introduction, right? State champions, Division One. I just want to say publicly in front of all of you and in front of the folks who have joined us this evening, we could not be prouder of you. I love what the back of your sweatshirts, the sweatshirts say if you want to turn around, young man. Earned, not given, could not, that is the absolute. So, I had the wonderful occasion of seeing this group play four times. And your poise, your composure is really, really, really impressive. I mean, I just, when we talk about representatives of your school, being representatives of this city, what a wonderful group of young men you were in terms of that. We're just so happy and so proud of you. And I have to say, it all starts with the leadership. Coach Anderson, we appreciate you. I mean, you have really molded and shaped these young men. Ways that are impressive, and here's one way. You don't think people are watching, people are watching. I have a 13-year-old son, some of you all are on Instagram, and he follows you. So be careful what you say on Instagram. But he would come to the games with me and he would watch you all. And never when there was a call that was questionable where you out of character. You're always working hard, particularly on the defensive side of the court. Just really, really great models, gents, and I congratulate you now. We have an internet issue, as you know, a network issue, so we could not create the citations that we wanted to give you tonight. We thought about having you, oh, let's just postpone it until April 11th. Come on in, gentlemen. But your dance cards are full, right? You've already been to City Hall. I'm hearing that you're gonna visit the State House. There's a Celtics thing happening on Monday with the coach and the captains. We wanted to have you here tonight to honor you, to recognize you, to celebrate you for such a wonderful season. So congratulations, and Mayor, if you wanted to, I don't know, you might have already addressed them on Tuesday.
We had a great opportunity to have them at my office with the city council and support of the city council chamber. It's a great night to recognize, they've heard of me, well how proud I am, but more importantly, how proud the city is for what they've done. And you're right, earned, not given. You proved that all the way through the season, so congratulations. And carry this with you and remember the excitement you felt winning and more importantly, what you meant to the city doing the job you did this year. So congratulations. Maybe you got a picture with the whole school committee and trying to make us all.
That's right. So you noticed the community, the school committee is sporting the championship sweatshirts. They're still sewing together a couple for me. I'm sure I'll get them pretty soon. Didn't get one, oh, no! If I could just have everyone's attention really quickly, Mason wanted to address the, address the room.
I just want to say thank everyone in here for supporting us. And we're very happy to be able to bring a state championship back and thank you guys for all the support.
One of the best role models in the city elect. I watched SCA, this man right here. Let, set the tone, he had the whole city watching when he was in college. A Division One athlete from Lynn, Massachusetts. America, I never forget him, and all these kids are too. So I want a round of applause for this man.
Thank you. Similar with Mason, on behalf of myself, Lynn English, the boys' basketball program, we would like to thank you all. Being a Lynn native myself, meant a lot to bring a championship back here as a coach. Felt better than when I was a player, actually. So, just want to say thank you, we appreciate the support. We've seen a lot of faces in the stands. Myself, growing up here, knowing a lot of people. Felt good to finally bring some good positivity back to the city. And glad to do it with this group of kids, couldn't act with a better group. Administrators at the school, thank you for all your support, we appreciate it. Hopefully, we can do it a little, couple more times. Thank you.
Are you gonna be on time?
Oh yeah, she's a teacher. So they didn't get their certificates.
He didn't, oh, good point.
Hey, I see the trophy.
I don't know if they have it yet.
Oh, they don't?
She also said your girl's going to league, right? Okay. Yeah, I just said I wanted to check.
I like that, yeah.
I know, great feeling.
Yeah, it is. Like the red sauce, once you start, it keeps on going.
You know, it's a big deal.
A great job in the school, and that's a plus.
I was gonna say, let's adjourn on that.
Did you move it? Thank you. Well, we gotta have the table just a little bit.
Yeah, it's snug back there. Yeah, I'll let them know.
You have to give me high signs on the time sometimes, I don't see the time.
Yep.
That was great, great to have the team in and what a great season they had. So, glad we got a chance to recognize their season. Next on the agenda is Dr. Tutwiler, an update on the school year 18-19 district improvement calls.
Yep. So if you could retrieve this document, we're gonna, we're gonna walk right through it, yep. So just, just by way of setting the table, each district improvement goal is a cover sheet and then there's some stuff behind it that I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about. So you've already, in subcommittee, you heard us substantive information about our work on one of the four district improvement goals, which was to develop a social-emotional learning curriculum for grades K-5. I want to take this time to update you on the other three. And I'll start with what I really see as the anchor for our work over the next three years. This is the strategic plan. The goal was to engage a diverse group of educators and community stakeholders to develop a multi-year strategic plan, complete with a collaboratively-developed vision and district core values. The hope was to complete this work by May 2019, we are getting there. Since October, the leadership team, which is comprised of all principals, directors and assistant directors, and the inclusive planning team, which is comprised of students, teachers, parents, elected officials, and partners from more than 20 community agencies, have been working in parallel fashion to dive deep on what is working well in the district and where we see ourselves in the next three to five years. Through visioning exercises, inviting broad input, deep data analysis, and to be frank, really honest conversations about our work within four students, we've arrived at what I would call a substantive community agreement on a path forward. On the top, on top of the document, so this is, this document here. On the top of the document, there is an updated mission and vision for the Lynn Public Schools. These are statements that we agreed to find the work that we're doing and our best thinking around the direction the district is headed, is headed in for our work with students. Beneath those statements are a set of core values. If I might say so, I believe this, these are the anchor of this document. Inclusiveness, shared responsibility, collaborative relationships, high expectations, inspiring lifelong learning. These are the beliefs that, that drive our actions. I can't begin to underscore the profundity of a simple set of collaboratively identified core, core values. No matter the direction, no matter the decision, these are the values that we are committed to be reflected in the direction we take, the decisions we make. With mission, vision, theory of action, and core values in place, beneath is a set of strategic objectives on which we will focus over the course of the next three or more years. These are big, big objectives, which is the way it's supposed to be. This is about stretching to meet the needs of students, not about identifying easily achievable objectives. The specificity of the work in each strategic objective is defined in initiatives which are not included in this document. To be clear, we have a really substantive start on identifying the initiatives that work in service of these objectives. However, last Thursday, both the leadership team and the inclusive planning teams came together to work to refine the initiatives. It seemed prudent to hold off on giving you those until the shifting has stopped. I suspect that the initiatives will be complete in the next few weeks. What remains thereafter is action planning and refining the specific outcome measures for success. We're, we're on track. The strategic plan, meaning mission, vision, core values, strategic objectives, and strategic initiatives, will be complete by the end of May. I think I want to pause there and see if there are questions before I move on, given that this is the first time you're seeing that document.
Number Castlehouse?
Well... So, being a part of the district-wide strategic planning committee, I got to take part in this process. Just to note to, to everyone here, there were stakeholders from all over the city. Community partners from the Department of Children and Families to, we have Children, Friends and Family. There's so many different stakeholders involved and we actually were part of the, the mission, vision, and core value development process. And part of the vision statement exercise that we all did together as, as a, as a whole team, John, Mr., we actually had John Ford in the audience with us too. We all participated in this. And when I read this vision statement, part of the objective that day was to get goosebumps. And it's inclusive and when I read this vision statement today, it was very reflective of the work that was done during that, the last several months. So when we talk about transparency, I would like to give you a round of applause for the, the team, everyone, the work that's done here, I'm excited. This is, this is really good. This is a good step forward for what we want to achieve in the public schools. And I think the vision statement and the mission and our core values that we're setting up are leading us to have those, those, those high expectations and to really, to have those strategic focuses and sparkles that we need to really, to really move forward and to achieve equity. And I think a lot of people care about this district and there's a lot of passion and collaborative relationships that we're gonna develop through this pipeline. And I think there's a lot of great things, a lot of good public, the public educator in this city, we have some of the best. And I'm telling you right from the, from the bottom of my heart, the leadership I've been seeing throughout this process, on the committee, from my colleagues, we are so grateful for this. And I'm just very excited and I, I want to share that publicly with, after reading this the first couple minutes. I really got excited about it because that was very, when you got a lot of people in the room and you have a lot of different, different kind of experts in the room, we had to put our egos to the side and we had to get things done and we had to work together. And that was remarkable. We had a great facilitator from DESI. We had a lot of people working really hard, dedicating their time to get these things done on their off time and I appreciate that and thank you.
Dr. Tutwiler, I did want to just point out and, and just go to, I want to emphasize that the, the core values that you, you do list here, I feel as though I, I hear these often and we actually did hear them earlier today when we were talking about the policy for attendance. So, it's, it's, it goes without saying, it's, it's a relief that these are the core values that reflect, it seems like, every decision that you've been making. And these are some, some awesome core values, inclusiveness, shared responsibility, collaborative relationships, high expectation, and inspiring lifelong learning. And if we apply these to what we put out, the product will just only get better. Obviously, it's, it's important and I just wanted to, to, to say that it goes without notice that this is what we're, we're seeing and I appreciate that. I did want to ask, what is the importance of the highlighted words in this document?
Yeah, so, so in the mission and in two of the strategic objectives, and I think both Mr. Ford, member Castellanos, Ms. O'Neill, can speak to how much passion and debate there was over every single word in that statement.
When you mentioned it, yeah.
Every single word, which, which I appreciate. Folks were really passionate about this reflecting what we mean. And so, so there was, where there's highlights, there's ongoing debate. I'll just say that.
So, it's ongoing, okay.
Well, I mean, you have to stop at some point.
Of course, yes, yes, okay. So that, at least we get a, a, a window into what these mean because otherwise, I'm thinking, you know, sometimes you highlight things and it comes out and it prints that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, there's, there's meaning.
Okay, good. Yes, number Ford.
Just wanted to just sidebar. We did argue for 10, 15 minutes over individual words, getting the proper word, making sure we had it correct. The intensity was there, but the thing I wanted to add, we've got a young lady on our strategic planning team who's going full scholarship to Duke Free Med. And I think that's something that doesn't get enough, enough of attention. You did a great, great job tonight showing our athletics, you know, and, and what they accomplished, which is amazing. But I think sometimes we get overlooked in the quality of the teachers we have and the quality of education that these kids are getting out of Lynn. Duke Free Med is top shelf and we got one of our kids going there. I think it's, you know, pretty important.
Of course. Number Nicholson.
Thank you. Thanks so much for this. This is really exciting and great update. I had a question, because I, you know, I'm more familiar conceptually with the idea of a mission and a vision and the values and the strategic objectives. Can you talk a little about, a little bit about the theory, theory of action and sort of why that's there and, and what it's gonna mean for us to have a theory of action?
So, so, and you're gonna see that in another place also. You know, having core value is really, really important. I talked about that in the, in my opening about the strategic plan. But the theory of action is, you know, most simply put is an if-then statement. If we do these things, then we can expect these outcomes. And we felt like it was really important to make a statement about, on a, you know, in a really clear and simple terms, sort of in line with the mission, in line with the vision, in line with the core values that says that if we do it this way, we can expect these outcomes. So that's why that's there.
Thank you. Number Gailey.
I've really loved your theory of action. It, it just says...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. That's not my theory of action.
Yeah, everybody that's on the...
I want to be real, so I, I...
Yes, you can.
I want to be... I want to be clear that this, this has a hundred thousands of fingerprints on it as members of the group went out and solicited input from, you know, their respective communities, brought it back. This is not Pat Tutwiler's document. This is a Lynn Public Schools community document.
And meeting the needs of students is Maslow. So that's basic meeting of needs. I just really appreciate reading this and the if-then statement was wonderful. And if we become more inclusive and then interject in there the social-emotional needs of students, and I think that is the way we will really see leaps and bounds in our students. And thank you for all your work. You did a great job on this piece of paper that's in front of me, all of you. That's all I have to say.
So again, we, there's still some more work to do and I will bring a polished document to you probably at the end of the, in the May, maybe early June.
Great.
Oh, there's, there's, there's three more. Two more, two more. All right. So if you move on to the next one, there should be, it says inclusive hiring. It's a double-sided document. "We've also taken some concrete steps to develop a strategy to diversify the staff of the Lynn Public Schools. To be clear, at present, 92% of the teaching staff in the Lynn Public Schools is white. More than 70% of the student body is of color. I heard loud and clear in the questions you asked of me during the interview process, as well as during the development of the improvement goals for this year, that there is interest and commitment in diversifying the staff of the Lynn Public Schools. I concur wholeheartedly and the research overwhelmingly stresses the importance of and positive outcomes related to a diverse staff. That said, Lynn is not the only district interested in this work. There's a DESI-sponsored effort toward the same end. On the national level, there's been a robust conversation on the topic for years. Toward the development of a strategy, I assembled a small working group to aid in the development. Much of our work thus far has involved making certain that we understand the problem and what the research says about effective steps and developing a strategy. The document that you have reflects the outcomes of both our understanding of the research and what the strategy, and what the strategy must be anchored in in order to be effective on a long-term basis. First and foremost, the theory of action. We believe that if the Lynn Public Schools clearly articulates core values within which is a statement of value of a diverse staff, actively and purposefully recruits candidates of color, ensures that equity work is a responsibility of all educators, engages in promising research-based practices in its schools aimed at meeting the needs of all learners, especially those historically marginalized, and develops support and feedback mechanisms for staff of color, then it will be better positioned to recruit, develop, and retain a diverse staff. Related on the backside of that document, we've developed a graphic that visually represents what we believe to be the path forward. Each one of the concepts represents an important piece of the work in recruiting and retaining a diverse staff. In our view, they are in order of importance. You'll notice atop the list is retention. This is really about developing school cultures and strong mindsets around equity and inclusion. This is, this is related to the piece of the theory of action around ensuring that equity work is a responsibility of all educators. We're embracing the long game here. We want to diversify our staff and the fruits of that effort to be longstanding. Before recruitment can begin in earnest, we've got to do some work around developing the kinds of school cultures, the kinds of mindsets that will make retaining staff of color more plausible. Here, I want to point out the important alignment with the strategic plan. Strategic objective number two, if you want to flip back to that, is precisely the kind of work that we believe needs to be done as part of the diverse recruitment effort. There are elements of this action plan that have not yet been leveraged, the action plan around developing the plan to recruit and retain a more diverse staff. However, at this point, we have a really solid start. I can answer any questions you have about that.
Number Sadowite, thank you. I know that this is only one component to recruiting and being able to hire teachers of color. I know that you've voiced concerns before about the period of time where we hire teachers. You wanted that to change. That's not addressed here. Is that just something that should be done overall or should it be, it's gonna help in this area too, right?
Yes. That's something that is separate and apart from this. I think that's something we can address through negotiations with the teachers' union.
Okay. And...
Or impact bargaining or whatever. Go ahead.
Okay. And the retention part, you're saying, is the, the most important. We obviously want to keep teachers working here and a way to do that is to make sure that they have some sort of equity in the, in the school and what we put out. Do you see that there's any issues with regards to how our administration here looks compared to the schools? Do you think that it needs to be more diversified as well to make people feel as though they have more equity in, in the district?
I don't, even though this is, seems to be teacher-facing, I, I think this is educator-facing. Teaching staff, paraprofessionals, school leadership, central office, this is educator-facing.
Okay, thank you. Number Castellanos.
What is some of the, the DESI recruitment guidelines? I know there's certain commissions like the racial, a balanced advisory council, like what are some of the best practices? What, what, what does DESI recommend for recruitment? Are they gonna support? I know recruitment does cost. Do we have grant eligibility if we want to enhance, when we talk about inclusive hiring, are we able to access grant support?
Yeah, so one member on this small team is actually part of the DESI, sort of, I guess I want to call it a community of practice, of educators and leaders that are, there's a parallel effort with DESI and I believe it, I don't know the deadline by which they expect to make this happen, but I know the percentage is 25% of the teachers in the state being of color, which, which is aggressive. And I'll tell you, it's wonderful to have a member of our team sitting on that commission because she can bring to bear on our thinking and work precisely with the conversations that are happening there. This document aligns beautifully with the conversations that they're having there. The cost of recruitment, I mean, I mean, there, there's, I mean, that's just the action. I don't know that the, the action itself is really where the rubber meets the road. I, I think it's, you know, more about what the district is, is about and what, you know, how it's, you know, presenting itself to potential candidates and what's, what's true about what's happening in the district. I think that's the attract, not necessarily going out and asking, you know, engaging in conversations. Because I'll tell you, as I did, you know, many months ago, it, it's, it's gonna be hard. I really think our richest resource is here right now in our, in our schools. And so to the extent that we're leveraging, we're successful with those strategic objectives, to the extent that we're, you know, making that, the elements of that theory of action true, particularly the one around ensuring that equity work is a responsibility of everyone, I, I think that's what's gonna, you know, turn the tide. And I, I'd said on purpose a couple of times in here, playing the long game, I don't, I don't think this is gonna be immediate.
Number Capola.
Okay. We've brought this up before, but, you know, as far as in-house goes, at Lintech, we have the early childhood program and many of those students go on to get teaching degrees. But what are we doing to kind of, you know, like, support and encourage them to go on and then come back and keep our eye on them as they go along?
Right. So that, that's, that's part of the concrete steps that we plan to build into this. There really, I think there once was at some point, but there, there really isn't a formal, you know, interest Lynn Public Schools students in the, the profession of teaching or, you know, make connections with students at tech who are in the early childhood shop. And then, you know, create a pathway for them to go get their degree, get licensed, and come back. It doesn't exist. There's no formal program around that, but I think that needs to be a feature of this, of this plan.
We do have to have that, thank you.
And I, I do think it existed one, at one point, I don't know. I don't know why it went away, but... I don't know why it went away, but...
Member Nicholson?
Thank you. First, I just want to say I, I agree strongly with Ms. Capola's point about having that formal pipeline. I think that's a great idea. I know this is something we've talked about in other, and talked about resuscitating or implementing. So this is an interim update. The, the plan will be coming in the fall, right? I get, one of the questions I had about that, are we going to be able to look at sort of metrics of what the, what the world looks like today and what we think is successful will look like in terms of, for example, for retention? Like what's our current retention rate? Are, are we going to be, are you going to be proposing what the retention rate should be? Is there recruitment, like how many people are we recruiting now? How many people do we think we, we should be recruiting? And the same for, for, for the pipeline. I mean, it sounds like we are not measuring this now, but is, are there ways to start measuring how many students go into the profession so that we can, you know, I guess, test the theories of action that you have?
Yeah, so, so, you know, going forward, I mean, there, there will need to be SMART goals around this, right? So we've, we've got four district improvement goals now. They're all SMART. They all result in like tangible ends, right? The same has to be so for this. So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we've made, taken some pretty substantive steps on this in terms of just getting grounded and understanding, but that, that piece is to come.
Great, and thank you for that. I think it's a great update.
Member Ford?
Are there any grants or any kind of money available out there for recruitment anywhere? Because I mean, obviously, money talks, kids coming out of school, they've got a ton of debt, you know, debt forgiveness, bonuses. I mean, if we're going to compete, there are other communities that are doing it. They get bonuses, they get debt forgiveness. If we're going to compete for that talent out there, we've got to kind of match the market.
So, man, Member Castellanos asked about that, like, and maybe this is what you were referring to, you know, what are some of the best practices out there? That's one of them. But that's one frankly that, not necessarily, that isn't grant-driven. It's built into district budgets, with forgiveness, whether it's, you know, bonus structures. So, I mean, if you all want to do that, I'm, I'm down. We can do that. But that, that, that part is, is, is hard. And so this group hasn't focused necessarily on things that are outside of our purview. We're focusing only on things that, that we have control over. And there is, I wanted to say, there is, there is one grant to speak of that targets, it's a state grant, that targets paraprofessionals, which, you know, there's a larger percentage of educators of color and our paraprofessional, in our paraprofessional group. And this, this grant, if, if a paraprofessional does not have a college degree, this grant offers sums of money, and I want to say, she, look, keep me honest, in the amount up to $7,000 for...
Seven thousand five hundred.
Seven thousand five hundred to support the paraprofessional in earning a college degree, teacher license thereafter.
Member Gailey?
And we are, I don't mean to interrupt, and that, we are, that's been discussed. And I've met with Ms. O'Neill about that.
And I believe that they have like something, a state initiative, where if a teacher goes and works in an urban school district for five years, they get, they get a loan forgiveness, isn't that true? So John, they have that too, like the state urban forgiveness loans.
And that's only for state loans, right?
No, well, it's not for private loans, only for public, like federal ones.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on something you just said, Dr. Tett-Weiler. But when, when we're looking at things inside of our control, is that the control of the Lynn Public Schools? Or the control of the, the team that's working on this?
The small working group, right. So I'm, you know, intimately acquainted with what the research says about bonuses and things of that nature. That's a conversation that's had. That, that won't be part of this necessarily. That's a separate conversation to be taken up in negotiations, to be mentioned in this forum relative to budget. But, but that team to, you know, put all of its apples in, in that basket, I don't think is a good use of time.
Yeah, and I, and I think that makes sense because in, in terms of giving the team focus, but I think, you know, we as a committee, if this is a goal that we're committed to, we should, I think it'd be helpful for us to understand if, to the extent there are things outside of the control of the group that you have commissioned to work on this, that we're, that we have some insight into what those are. It might, it could be financial, it could be policy. For example, the, like, the attendance discussion we were having earlier, the district was trying to increase attendance. The policy was in the control of the school committee, and so that's something that you, that you can make a recommendation to us about. And so I, you know, this isn't going to be solved in the next six months when, by the time we get the strategy. But as we continue to work on this over the years, I think we should, we shouldn't, we should, as a district, not limit ourselves to whatever we have sort of in our direct control so that we can identify things that need to be changed.
I'll definitely put all the chips on the table.
Thank you. Yes, Member Castellanos?
And just lastly, on the partnership component, I, I really appreciate the efforts to enhance partnerships because I believe that Massachusetts has some of the best institutions for educators. We're all, honestly, we're right there in the hub. We've got our local, Salem State, North Shore Community College. We also have, if you look down in Boston, we have BU, Harvard, some of the elite of the institutions out there. And I know there's lots of work being done around enhancing inclusive hiring practices through the higher ed. I believe higher ed is also, I know the state are, they're, they're very aware of what the challenges are to, to enhancing this particular item and diversifying the workforce and education. I just would like to know if we could, I don't, I'm not sure. And I like the bullet point, identify university partner for thought partnerships, professional development opportunities, and teacher candidate pipelines. But I think partnership is another form of best practice and forms of funding. I think locating funding through partnerships is vital. And kind of during the identification process, it's, it's important to develop those relationships. And I know we have a new partnership coordinator that's going to be working probably that angle. And I know there's a lot of work happening behind the scenes, but just to put it out there, partnerships can lead to big money and it could lead to out-of-the-box alternatives, especially when we have, you know, we have low funding from the, our state. That we're trying to work on chapter seventy, funding alignment issues and, you know, before the state comes in, it'd be better to, you know, have some leverage and some open window with funding. Because I think funding is very, it's, it's important for our taxpayers and everyone else in the city to be sensitive to that. And I think partnerships is a good option and a good tool and mechanism to really combat that, especially with hiring practices.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Good. Moving on to the third and final, addressing middle school overcrowding. On February twenty-first, I gave you an overview of a significant step to address overcrowding at the middle school level. This involved closing the Early Childhood Center and opening an eighth grade program in that space called the Discovery Academy. By way of brief reminder, that Discovery Academy will serve approximately three hundred LPS eighth grade students. We will reserve seats for applicants in the manner in keeping with the proportional issue related to overcrowding. Accordingly, the most seats will be reserved for breed, district students, then Marshall, then Pickering. Students will engage a traditional set of core courses that will be enhanced by a discovery set, a discovery series involving hands-on project experiences, project-based experiences related to particular shops. You can feel free to sort of look through some of the things that I've given you. I provided you with a wealth of information related to this plan. First and foremost, I, I wanted to make clear that we are handling the reassignment of the classrooms from ECC with the utmost care and thought. And there is a spreadsheet in there that shows you where each one of those classrooms is going. By way of reminder, the kindergarten classrooms assigned to ECC from the Tracy District will now be housed at Sewell Anderson. That kindergarten cla, the kindergarten classrooms from... Oh, excuse me. From the Ford District will be housed at Ingalls. That leaves a total of nine special education classrooms that needed new homes from ECC and four from Sewell. The spreadsheet provided indicates where each of these, each of these programs will be housed next year. I want to be clear that there was particular attention paid to the, the student experience beyond that year, meaning there are programs and supports in place at, at the new school to allow a student to stay and receive appropriate services. We're also intentional in attempting to create like programs in the same schools to allow for teaming capability. Lastly, we sweat the details, ensuring that the proper related special education service providers were in place at the new placements. It should be known that the teams program will remain at ECC as well as two integrated preschool classrooms. I have also provided you a rough, rough estimate of the costs involved with this, with launching this program. I use the word rough intentionally as I assume there will be unforeseen costs we will encounter as we engage, but I think this is pretty close. We've developed what we, what would be the equivalent of three clusters and built, built in the necessary personnel into a budget description. Also included are the costs, estimated costs of moving and new furniture. Last but not least, I want to shout out Ms. Karakides and the LVTI staff as, as they have risen to the occasion to embrace this idea. Included in your packets are brochures that were created for parent night, intended to hold, be held next week. And actually, Ms. Karakides was at the Night of Excellence at Marshall yesterday with this brochure, talking to students and parents in seventh grade. What is more, there have been assemblies at each of the middle schools advertising the new program. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Just, I have a quick, so, quick question related, so what's the response, man? So far, I know it's early. Feedback yet or...
It's been pretty positive, to be honest with you. And actually, I was over at Marshall yesterday and had an opportunity to talk to some students, some parents, and some teachers who teach at Marshall who, who think it's a, I'm not patting myself on the back, but who think it's a pretty good idea and think that it's going to provide them some relief at their school. I would be lying if I told you that there's also some apprehension as a similar program has existed some time ago and, and did not work. But we have, we're, we're aware of that and some of the reasons why the program did not work and have built that into our thinking of this particular program. And to be clear, a big piece of why it didn't work is that there was an attempt, as I understand it, to do a double dose of the exploratory. So students essentially did the same thing in grades eight and nine. This is different. We're calling this Discovery Academy on Purpose. And as you look through the brochure, you'll see that it is not an exploratory, but it's an opportunity for students to engage in, we think, really engaging educational topics that relate to particular skills and knowledge in the shops that they would learn more about the following year. There's also in there lots of advertisements about the kinds of things kids can do when you're an eighth grader at a, in a high school setting, so.
Member Capola, then Member Sadoway.
What do we need to do as far as the state's concerned? About saying we are creating this and we're dismantling the Early Childhood Center?
For, for creating it, there's a one-pager where you're redesignating tech from a senior high school to a junior senior high school. Literally one page, the document, you send it in, you're done. And the same goes for closing ECC.
Okay.
I remember several months ago, we had talked about the fact of the area and them utilizing some of the resources of Lynn Tech, and we all thought it was a good idea. And I believe it was last month you came to us and you came with us with an idea and said that you were going to follow up with us more today. So during that interim, I got a lot of questions from parents about what, what was going on with ECC and what this discovery program. And my response to them was always, nothing's set in stone yet, it's not definitive. We're, we're going to get additional information at the next meeting, so wait for it. And then I have people saying that they see applications and I, I, again, I was, I was under the impression that we were going to hear more about it today, not, not having already applications in a deadline of April twelfth. Is, was there a rush to get it because of the April twelfth deadline? Is that an important date?
There's a rush to get it because we're, we're nearing the end of the school year. So I, I just, our, our need to move didn't match up with the meeting timeline for, for school committee. And, you know, I, I think that program shifts are in, in my purview. So we're moving on it.
I agree there in your purview, but it was just surprised because people come to us with questions and I would like to have the right answer. And the answer was what you told me, which was, we're going to follow up with you and get more definitive things to you next meeting. And I understand that they don't always match up, but you, to date, you've been very great with communication. And I know that with the internet and with everything going on, things can happen. So I just wanted to, it just, it's good to have that. Oh, the applications are going out and their deadlines, the twelfth of April. Thank you.
Dr. Tett-Weiler, can I?
Yeah, true.
The April twelfth date also connects to that Lynn Tech is processing the ninth grade applications, which is a daunting task in itself. And so this is an added process. It's an application, there's an interview, and so they needed to get these out, have the applications come in by April twelfth so that the guidance counselors can work over April vacation through those applications and schedule interviews. So it's, it's kind of the bridge between trying to manage the ninth grade process along with now a new eighth grade process. So these applications really needed to get out.
And the guidance, we'll, we'll add a guidance counselor for, for this. When is that going to go out for? For posted?
Soon.
Soon?
Along with the, with all the other added positions. I mean, we, we're, we're in the midst of developing a budget to be proposed to you. I really want to, thank you. Go through that process first.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Member Gailey?
Is this the schedule for next year's pre-K kindergarten? Pre-K kindergarten, this paper, did you go over it yet?
Yeah.
All right.
This outlines for you what's going where.
Well, I'm really concerned with this two, three-day program because I'm hearing complaints. I'm hearing that the two-day students are not getting equal education, even though the number of hours and everything, but the students are walking away with less. So I thought we had a pilot program and we would be looking into it this year again and voting on it. I thought so. I, I may be wrong. Was it a pilot last year? We're just seeing it for a pilot, the two, three day? Because we, we expanded it to Harrington and we expanded it over to Connery. And I'm really concerned about it because I'm hearing some really questions about that two-day, like, I'm hearing at Connery, they used to have the whole neighborhood children that were kindergarten. I mean, pre-K would be going to school and they would get a good sturdy foundation for basic reading. And that now it's only a two-day and not all of the population is being serviced. And I thought that's why when they were a level four, we did a wraparound and the wraparound study came out and... and the wraparound study came out and said that they needed a lot of, really a lot of help in their reading. And I'm concerned because if we don't do something, and this is a pilot, we don't change it soon, then it's gonna be, they're gonna be in the third grade and they're gonna be struggling reading. And then we're gonna be right back where we were when Harrington and Connery were the level fours and states were coming in to look at that and get a wraparound and see how we can fix that problem.
So, coming from Harrington, um, and being a preschool teacher myself for many years, I would say to you, certainly any of the educators who do early childhood agree that would, it would be fabulous to have five-day programs, five-day all-day programs if we could. But realistically, our district has a number of students who need additional services at this age and we don't have the room for them. So, the change to the two, three-day was to help in servicing students who needed speech, OT, PT, um, you know, ESL support. It was to allow them to get those other supports, um, to the level that they needed it.
But on the other hand, I sat here on the school committee last year and the year before, and I was told there are no rooms, there are no rooms. But when we're going into this Discovery Ac- Academy, we found rooms over at Ingalls, we found rooms over at Sewell Anderson, we had rooms over at Callahan where they opened up. They closed down that early childhood center and then they put it over to Con- Callahan. So, I, I am very apprehensive about this and I'm very concerned with the students' welfare here. And that's how I'm feeling right now. And I'm not just talking, I'm not an early childhood teacher, but an early childhood teacher is exactly from Connery. One of them is telling me that this is what's happening and the students that are in the two-day are really not getting the quality education.
Yes. So, I, I, you know, I'm just gonna echo what Deputy Superintendent Reggero said. Um, there's not a person who knows anything about education that wouldn't agree with the idea that more days is gonna benefit a student. Um, but, but as I understand it, when this was proposed last year to go to this model, um, the, the idea was that we, there were hundreds of students who had a right to services that we couldn't provide services for. This two-day, three-day allows us at a minimum to provide services to the stu- the, you know, to meet those students' needs that are, you know, related to their disability. Uh, if we expand the number of days, what's gonna happen? I can tell you with high confidence, the number of students who get nothing is gonna go back up again. That, that's the, that's the give and take of it.
Member Capola.
Yeah, is there any possibility that we could ask Mrs. Jewels to check back on the vote? You know, not obviously here today, but check on it and to see. Because I remember it, as Ms. Gaetley said, as a pilot program. And so, I think that we should look at it. And we were told that day there were no classrooms and yet, you know, when somebody wants to find them, they can find those classrooms. And, um, I have to agree with Ms. Gaetley that it's the educators, not necessarily the parents, but it's the educators that are saying to us that it's not a good, uh, you know, thing for the kids.
I would be one of them who would agree. However, however, we also have to be on the right side of the law and we, we would drive ourselves into a deeper, you know, less desirable out-of-compliance scenario if we broaden the number of days of service for students. As long as we're able to meet the services that, that they require, we're closer to that. And this two-day, three-day allows us to do that.
The only thing is, the ones who do have the ed plan, they, I think is they need three services. So, if you get a child that's on just a two-day and they're getting three different services on an ed plan, is it two or three?
So, typically, the children who are on IUPs are, they, they get the three-day program.
Mm-hmm. But even at, at a three-day program, when you're getting three services, it's, you know, it's limiting their time of the academic piece that we feel our preschoolers need.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree. Uh, I'm just, and we can maybe, special ed directors here, maybe we can provide you with an analysis that, what, what expanding days will mean in terms of meeting the needs of students who have a right to them.
And just, I think, as we're talking about all this, the reality and we were in, the three of us were in last Friday to identify the substantial financial need. Uh, I mean, the goal, just to take a couple of points. The goal of per pupil student across the state is eighteen thousand. We're spending twelve thousand five hundred times sixteen thousand four hundred students. I mean, we're looking at at least forty-seven million less than we should be in terms of investment. So, we can discuss all of these challenges and recognize them, but the reality is that the funding to do what we have to do in the schools is absolutely challenging, challenging every day, as well as citywide, obviously. So, uh, these are absolutely important discussions to have, but I think the reality of what we need to do and the importance of, of the legislation that is being viewed right now in the, in the council, the school committee and the council have both unanimously voted resolutions. Uh, I testified with both Sheila O'Neil and the superintendent last week and I thought, to be honest with you, there was a lot of different mayors in there, a lot of testimony. I don't know that any other city came up where we had the head, the president of the union, the superintendent, and the mayor that's together testified strongly recommending that we need to see larger investments. So, these clear investments we need to make in our children are, were able to meet and those dollars need to be provided. So, I think we all are on the same page, but I think we're really being challenged in terms of what we have to make some of these things happen. And I'm not diminishing the discussion we had last year. I think it's important to see what, what votes and I think that, that request is appropriate. But I just wanted to point out that I think we're recognizing the challenge, but more importantly, I think we're trying to face it together and, and hopefully the legislature and, and the administration will find a way to collaborate and, and really address the, um, the results that came out from the commission's report in two thousand and fifteen. Member Nicholson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to, to add to this, my, I think it makes sense to check the minutes. My recollection as well is that we didn't, we hadn't come up with a permanent solution that we were, we thought was, uh, had to address all the concerns and that's who we're gonna do something for a year. But what, the other thing that I remember us talking about is, uh, think creatively about how to partner with outside agencies to provide some of the services that we thought were, were so important for, for kids at that age that we weren't able to provide because of a lack of capacity. Um, so, you know, maybe an up, and, and my understanding is that that's been, that's been happening. I've been hearing, um, that, uh, you know, the, some of those conversations have been happening. Uh, but maybe an update along, along those lines are, would be helpful as well. You know, I think everybody here knows how important early education is and it, it, you know, we, we talk about that huge funding gap that the mayor mentioned. Uh, you know, finding ways to provide every kid full-day early education would be, would be huge for the city and it's something that other states, other cities are thinking about too. So, uh, I, I, that, that's not where we are in terms of what we could possibly do, but, uh, understanding that that would be, would be the ideal and thinking about how to, how to bridge that gap.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All good.
Uh, next on the agenda is, um, field trip request from Pickering Grade Eight to Canterbury Lake.
Uh, annual trip, lots of fun. Your blessing would be greatly appreciated.
I make a motion that Pickering Grade Eight be allowed to go to Canterbury Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire on June 12th, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Second.
All those in base?
Roll call.
Oh, it's out of state, yeah. Roll call, um, um, motion made and seconded.
Mr. Cas- Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on the agenda is Lynn Teachers Union is, uh, seeking permission to present awards to graduating high school and middle school students.
Make a motion that we allow the Lynn Teachers Union permission to present awards to graduating high school and middle school students.
Second. Uh, I think there's a roll call required on this. We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
So, next on the agenda is an update on the capital needs and I think it probably comes from, and I know, uh, Member Nicholson, you had some, had reached out and put this on the agenda, so I'm happy to speak to it. Uh, I think most of the members were, had a chance to be at the, um, at the presentation at the, uh, council chamber related to the capital investment plan and the proposed plan. And I think you both have in front of you, you all have in front of you two documents that reflect what is in the plan for the school side. I know there were many other projects that were, um, were potential, but these were the proposals. This is the proposal that inclu- that is inclusive of what we anticipate, or the proposal will be related to the schools. So, uh, I don't know if you've had a chance to go through it, but, uh, the, the two different, um, one proposal would be the capital cost by years enlisting the, the, the proposals. The second one also gives a, an indication of where some of those dollars would come from, funding sources. So, if you can see the difference on the two, one is just giving the, uh, the capital cost by year and then the second one would actually, where those funds would come from, whether it be from the general fund, pay-as-you-go, from our general fund, school building assistance, accelerated programs and so forth. So, um, so that's what those two documents are about. And I think, uh, I'll just, I can just go through a, through a few thoughts on this. Uh, and I, and I also have some of the questions and I'm happy to go. There was a hundred and seventy-five that were submitted, but obviously a hundred and seventy-five cannot be addressed. Uh, so the, there's nine that were, uh, made it onto, nine that were, uh, projects from the SIP were presented. Uh, we went over this, four made it on the list for twenty to twenty, twenty twenty-four. Um, and one of them is the Pickering, which I think we will be addressing next. And I just want to give, give a little bit of perspective on where we're at. I mean, the, the larger number, as you heard, was over five years we needed to invest. If we had the money, five hundred and eighty-seven million dollars in capital needs, which is a pretty daunting number when you think about it. So, and that runs across the schools as well as the city. And you had a chance to see that presentation. So, this, the five-year capital investment plan is how you, we make decisions and I'll be presenting this to the council for approval. Uh, what is the proposal that we can see within a five-year period? Uh, and obviously, these proposals are based on our budget, on, and they're fluid. What's gonna happen as we stabilize our budget and, and so forth? So, it's dependent on the dollars, but it is what our goals are and what we think we might be able to take on over the next five years. And again, it's, it's, the timelines dependent on our, on the indebtedness we have and our ability to build a capital fund and then access to state and federal money. And that's why one of these documents identify some of those dollars and where they can come from. Bonding, bonding equals needing debt service capacity in the operating budget. So, there's also options to pay as you go, which means that, that is money in the cap, is in the operating budget. But again, that means there's dollars that will be there. So, as we move through the budget process and we deal with a lot of the challenges we face, we'll be able to have a better read on what that means in terms of some of the proposals here. Uh, and I, you know, we're competing for resources across the city. And, you know, and this, as you understand, the operating benefits are, the operating budget is based on salary benefits, basic services to the employees, um, and, and then the city versus carving out money for these capital projects. It's a real, it's all part of the larger picture. But I think the important thing, and, and if you were there, Sean Cronin was pretty support, was very supportive of this, recognizing that you can't, if we don't have a plan and we're just, in a way, going from project to project, it really doesn't lend itself to, to proper planning over five years. And even though we may not be able to meet, uh, some of the recommendations that would be in the plan, at least we have identified what is a reasonable plan and then that's our goal to try and get there and see how we can get a chance to fund it. That five hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, there's the piece of it for new school construction accounted for seventy percent of that total, about four hundred and ten million dollars. So, that really clearly identifies the need on the school side. And as I said earlier, it's a hundred and seventy-five school projects were submitted. Obviously, we had to find a way where we could, in a reasonable way, move forward on, on a five-year plan. Uh, we have a three hundred and twenty-seven million dollar budget, of which two hundred-plus million goes to the schools. Um, so there's, you know, the question is what capacity do we have in our operating budget to pay for these capital needs? So, we're gonna have to be very creative. Uh, that's why we have to identify where those dollars are coming from and how we can get grant money and school building assistance dollars as well as accelerated, uh, you know, the accelerated repair proj- projects that we are, have been supporting because we get those reimbursement dollars from the state. I think the next step for the school facilities master plan, that was done. I don't know if people are aware of that, was done in two thousand and seven. And I'm sure we can get a copy of that. I think some of the members that are on the committee will remember that. That was done at a cost of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, we are looking to see how we can both take a look at that, see what has changed, working with ISD as well as maybe upgrading what happened in two thousand and seven to see if those needs have dramatically changed. I think probably a lot of that is still in play. We haven't been able to address some of, some of those needs. We have, but many we haven't. Um, so that was, I know a question, Jared, you had, uh, you know, what, what about that? So, we, we do have at least a baseline to start from two thousand and seven. I know it's twelve years ago, but we, we probably are looking at very similar needs and whether it be Pickering or Tracy or many of the other elementary schools. And what's going on right now, the energy projects that have been going on through the MSBA and the bond bill is tech windows, doors and roof, the hood windows, doors and roof, uh, the boiler repair replacement at Brickett and Classical. Uh, those are the energy projects, and again, you asked for the energy projects. We're trying to see what specific savings are being realized before making other decisions and we actually have worked in a contract on energy savings, uh, working with the CFO to identify clearly how that's working. But a lot of those projects were directly related to energy savings and those have been, been ongoing as we move forward. I know there is a, we have had a contract, so we're trying to get our hands around, uh, how, how much has that worked and is that the right direction to go? And working closely with the CFO, we'll definitely up, update you as we make those decisions on how that would work moving forward. So, that's, that's a bit of an update. I'm happy to have any questions or thoughts on it. But it probably leads into the next piece on the agenda, which, um, is, uh, taking a look at the statement of interest for the Pickering School. So, I don't know if there's any, Member Nicholson, if you want to, uh, speak to that or, I know you had a lot of interest. So, uh, again, there's, there's at least a little bit of a clearer picture, I think, on the school side and what we're looking at.
Thank you. This was, this was really helpful and thank you for, for you and your team for putting this together and sharing it. Um, I, I, and that, that, those were the questions I had, that's, that's helping to clarify. Uh, for the, for the facilities assessment and master plan, is the hundred and seventy-five, is that assuming we do a new plan or is that what the cost would be to update the, the plan from two thousand and seven?
That's probably looking at both and, and when, that's a number we put out there because that was the, the original number that we used, uh, in two thousand and seven. But it's probably both updating and, the new plan would probably be updating much of what happened on the old plan. Obviously, since that time, the Marshall Middle School has been taken off that list, which is a, a big step forward. But many of the other pieces on there probably are similar, but then it's, it's cost and, and, and what would, what would be the, uh, the priorities. So, that's where that number comes in.
Got it.
Related to that.
And so, what, what needs to happen for that to, like, start happening for them?
Well, it's, again, it's, it's as we, uh, we've been ongoing discussions in the budget. I know the, on the school side, there's, uh, there's work going on, on, on the budget on the school side. The CFO, I know, has been working pretty closely with, uh, on the school side to, with Kevin and I know they've been meeting. Uh, there's been ongoing meetings for all the department heads. We had initial meetings. We are then in the process of having second meetings. There'll be final meetings. Uh, we're hoping to have a final version of the budget by May first to the city council as well as we'll, we'll also be in the same place getting what we look to see for our budget on the school side when we're able to come up with a number. And then the question will be, as I said earlier, is there dollars available to, to do that plan or not? Obviously, it's, it's, um, on the agenda. It's a key piece of what we want to do. of what we want to do. It'll all, it'll all play out as we finalize what the budget's going to look like and what dollars are available.
So funding permitting, it would be in this budget cycle that we would?
This is part of the, this is one of the proposals, yes.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful.
Yes, Member Sadoway.
It's, this is a, a great Excel sheet that, that has a wealth of knowledge on here and, a wealth of data within it. And I, I was a little hesitant to see a lot of schools in year 2022 being added on as a, as a potential. But then if you look at the schools that were, were built, a lot of them were built in 92, it looks like. So it's, it's not as if the city hasn't been through this before. Stool Anderson says 92.
Expansion at Stool Anderson is 92.
Same thing with Shoemaker, and there's a few other schools for around that time. I, I-
As you see, I don't mean to interrupt, but as you see, some of those are for upgrades, energy efficiency and so forth, but.
Not built, yeah, yeah. But there were projects all done within the same period of time.
1892, maybe.
Remember that, right, John?
Never forget the graduation ceremony.
But I did want to emphasize what, I believe you said Cronin said during, after the, the presentation, he went up there and said, hey, this is daunting. This looks like it's, it's a lot, but it's, it's something that we have to do, and it actually makes our city better, not worse off. So it's, it's, if that's something that's echoed, I think that that, that would help us in our, in our steps forward with having to improve the shelves that house our students and educators, and make sure that they're providing the resources and, and safety that the students and educators deserve.
And clearly, you identified 175 projects. You had to narrow it down, but I, by having a plan, and I think I said it earlier, and you're right, it's, now we know what, what our goals need to be, and as we try and dig ourselves out of a substantial hole, we, we know where we want to go. It's, it's how do we continue to work to get there?
Thank you.
And any other questions?
Just a brief, just, I have, so, in some of the identified projects, I know we just had a presentation about, you know, green, you know, green opportunities and going into those upgrades. Did you implement the separate? And I didn't see any of the, I know MSBA on the side, I know some of these projects. Is there a plan to, to see what the eligibility status is going to be like? Did you, were you able to incorporate for the upcoming budget, or is that something just in the, we still just planning to get eligible?
Well, we're in the, there's a couple things, so probably two-pronged answer. There's, we're trying to become a green community, which would hopefully make us, make some money available. I mean, not, not the kind of money we need, but some money available that helps us start to, you know, become more energy efficient and greener in so many ways. And then I think as we look at these projects, and the Marshall Middle School's a perfect example, which we got an award as a gold lead school, so that we really built a school that addresses both the quality, which is a great school, but also how do we, how do we do it in a way that's energy efficient? So that will be, that's part of it. And, and I think some of those energy efficiency investments at least, at least continue to move us in the right direction. You know, boilers, I know there's work going on at the, the hood school part of that project, and I was there recently going through the school, and a school that we wouldn't think, comparing it to Tracy and Hood, you would think, you know, there's definitely a, a different dynamic, but the reality is the doors with, you know, you can basically look out the doors in the winter. So, you know, we need to do is new windows, and doing some of that work really does enhance the ability to make the school more energy efficient. So even though some of those investments aren't the major investments, they are making improvements that, that, that we see beneficial on that side.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I think next on, there's no other questions. I think next on the agenda is the, the SOI, the suggestion that we resubmit or, or vote to submit a proposal to get back in the mix for the Pickering Middle School with the MSBA. And if people want to have discussion, but I think we've talked about it, that it's important that we, happy to have discussion. I think it's important that we get back in the mix and continue to show that we're interested, we want to move forward, and how we can get to ES at some point soon. Member Nicholson, then Member Sadoway.
Thank you. Absolutely agree that we want to get back in the mix. And I know this is a, is a hard question, but I think it sounded like the feedback that we had got last time was around the, was around the financial status of the city and the ability to pay, the informal feedback. Do you have any sort of thoughts on what the prognosis will look like for what's going to be different as we start the process again?
That's a great question, and I, so it's tough to answer that. So we could say, let's wait till we kind of get a picture on it, but we'll, we'll have a budget by the time that this process is moving through. So I think it's important, at least from my perspective, it's important that we resubmit it back in and continue to show that we're really, and I think the MSBA does understand that we're trying to get to the point of getting the schools that we need. So I think it does show, even though we were denied in December, that we still are moving forward and trying to make something happen. So it's a great question, Jared. It's, but I think, you know, that as we go through this budget process and we put a capital investment plan again, and we start to try and get our hands around it, that we, we recognize and we're, with superintendent's help, coming up with novel ideas or novel ways to start to at least address the overcrowding that's happening in the middle schools, that we have, we have to continue to focus on how we get to ES on, on, on a new school.
Thank you.
And I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, where that's a part of our district-wide initiative is to address the overcrowding. It's, it's, it's an important thing. It's something that the city deserves, and our kids, and our educators as well. What I do want to note, and what I feel at least somewhat comfortable with, is that you're on the school committee with us as well. You know how important this is, and you have a huge part in the budget. So if this is approved, I, I, you know, at least we know that someone from City Hall, you, have the understanding of how important this is, and will at least attempt to address the need that we have in order to move forward with this, if the MSBA approves it.
And I think if you, I speak for the council, and they can usually, I'm sure they can speak for themselves, but that they, they also see the need, and I think they, they understand it, and have had numerous discussions with the CFO, who has been in a number of the schools, and recognizes that we, we have to find a way to move forward. So, Member Gately, then Member Ford.
In the presentation for the capital projects, when your CFO went over all of this, there was a huge glimmer of hope on this SOI going in now versus before, is the fact that we have that plan. And when MSBA sees that we have a plan, and sees that we're actually saving money or putting things aside and finishing some projects and moving forward, I think we have a better chance of getting it this time. I really do. So that's just, that presentation, the city council goes for this, and we go for this, and we're going to get it.
Member Ford, then Member Nicholson.
You know, there was concerns about re-entering the pipeline and the possibility. I was told today that the feasibility, feasibility study cost us 800,000.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm concerned about the risk of trying that again and not making it and wasting that 800,000. But I, I also come around to the point that it's more critical that we not waste a year that we could be wasting, because we're desperate. And the old adage, desperate times calls for desperate measures. The one thing I would suggest, the possibility of looking into, if we are going to be resubmitting basically a mirror image, I think, of what we submitted before, would there be any chance of, of asking the MSBA if there was any, be any financial considerations, since we're putting in the same document? We're going to, Commercial Street's going to be the exact same. The Pickering site is going to be different in the sense that to your suggestion, we're going to add on to the building, but they're going to be so similar to requests, that maybe they would give us some consideration.
I, I think we can work with them and see what, what we can do on that. And we've had some discussions, I know, and that when they were here, I think, John, you were there at the, at the Pickering, that we brought that issue up. And, and I think as we move through with that would be, and if we're, are accepted, we would definitely pursue that discussion with them. What can we do that will limit the kind of investment we have to make, seeing we've already made the other investment? We don't save that money, but it might be easier as you, as you're talking, that a lot of the plans are, are very similar in, in play right now. So this is definitely something we will pursue. Any other questions, or? Member Nicholson?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, just to echo that, and I, and I know we need to submit this formal language, and, and it sounds like we will, but, you know, it, it feels a little uncomfortable for, for, at least for me sitting here to, to take a vote, to submit this, and then feel like it's out of our hands in some ways with the, with the way the MSBA process works. And, you know, they, they've been great and supportive and much appreciate that, but I just, because I think, I think you're right, and Member Gately is right, Member Ford is right, we have been doing things that I think, like, is there a way to, to share the fact that, to your point, we have this capital improvement plan, and we can now see all the needs that we have and how they add up, and what another year would cost us, because next year we have to do this school, and next year, after that, we have to do that school. And we, we have now a district improvement plan, we have a goal of addressing overcrowding and are doing things to try to address that. Is there, is there a way to sort of formally give that feedback from the school committee to the MSBA that we are, we're really running out of options and we don't, that, that, we're, we're doing everything that we can, and, and here's the evidence, X, Y, Z, that we've gone to, that's different from where we were at this point last year?
I think that's, that'll be part of the process. As we get the SOI in, and then it'll be what is, what are, what are our, what does our proposal look like? And what are the discussions we need to make and have with them? I thought it was pretty frank, but positive discussion, even though we didn't get approved in December, but when they were out at Pickering, they didn't need to see the school. They understand the need. So it's, and, and Sean Cronin is, as our fiscal stability officer, he is, and that's why I think it was positive, him being very supportive of the capital investment plan. He's also on the MSBA board, so, so he's, he knows, he knows the need. He's also working with us closely on the fiscal side. So, you know, I, I think hopefully this, we're in a more positive place than we were a few months ago.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to vote to submit statement of interest to the MSBA for Pickering Middle School. Resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on March 28th, 2019, prior to the closing date, the Lynn School Committee, City of Lynn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated on or before April 12, 2019, for the Pickering Middle School located at 70 Konoma Ave.01904, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, far elimination of existing severe overcrowding, prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollment, replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility system, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation system, to increase energy conservation expected and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replace of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or another funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the District of Lynn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Second? There's a second? Requires roll call?
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Curriculum Subcommittee.
Yes. Hello, Mayor. We didn't have a vote in the Curriculum Subcommittee. We had a very nice presentation by Carolyn Troy and Tina Pufenagel, and they gave us some sample books to look at and go over, so we can decide and make a educated, you know, educated vote on the future of our students and SEL.
Oh, yeah, way down.
Thank you. There's another, the Public, the Policy Subcommittee meeting related to the foster care policy.
Yes. The Policies Subcommittee voted to accept and move to the full committee for recommendation the LPS foster care policy, which is required by state law.
Second.
It's a second? So roll call to accept?
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on is the Policy for Educational, okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's also?
We have another one, yeah.
Okay. So that was the next matter that was on for the Subcommittee?
Right. We took then another vote, which was to accept the LPS education policy for students and military families, which was required by state and federal law.
Second.
The second? That's a roll call vote required?
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. And finally, there was on the Personnel Subcommittee, where there's an Athletic Trainer posting.
Mayor, there was no votes taken, but the subject Athletic Trainer was tabled for, for the discussion in another meeting.
Okay, great. And with that, the next on the agenda is Communication Information, and that would be the superintendent's report.
Okay. So a couple of things on which to update you. Let me start with food. On March 14th, we hosted a group of parents and community stakeholders in this space for a brief overview of the food service program and a tasting. During this event, we received a good bit of feedback from parents and some students about how food tastes, as well as some concerns about its freshness, spoiled milk and juice, things of that nature. Further, some families reported that schools have run out of lunches, resulting in a student not being able to eat. We take that feedback seriously. Accordingly, all of the coolers containing milk and juice were inspected the following day. The report turned up zero cartons of spoiled milk or juice, and we continue to monitor accordingly. Further, the production records of the schools that reportedly ran out of food indicated that that was not the case. Here, though, the idea is not to turn around and refute feedback. Instead, the idea is to understand what might be the genesis of that feedback. For example, we're determined, we determined that sometimes students misread the sell-by label on the milk carton. We also need to be explicit with students that if they don't like the taste of milk they're, that they, of the milk they're given, to return it, and they'll get another. Further, for lunch, there are options. When a student reports that there's no lunches available, perhaps he or she is referring to the option he or she desired, and not necessarily no available lunch, as the latter is simply not the case. The theme of the formal presentation at the beginning was one of consistently and meaningfully capturing feedback in order to improve. Certainly, I see the meeting on the 14th as another step in that process. Relatedly, I want you to know that One Mighty, the One Mighty Mill Bagel Program, which began successfully at English High School on January 14th, was expanded to all secondary schools effective March 18th. On this topic, food, we will continue to solicit feedback, whether complimentary or constructive, and evolve accordingly. As I imagine, what is in the foremost of your thoughts is the current issue around our network. To be clear, an aggressive virus was detected on Wednesday, March 20th. Upon detection, the technology team immediately began mediating the issue. When it was determined, determined that both the nature of the virus and its aggressive nature was beyond the mediation effort, we decided to shut down the network. Shutting down the network prevented the virus from spreading. It also allowed our, our team to determine which machines- aggressive nature was beyond the mediation effort, we decided to shut down the network. Shutting down the network prevented the virus from spreading. It also allowed our team to determine which machines were impacted, and a plan for addressing those machines. When it was determined that the number of machines that required physical manipulation was large, we brought on additional hands, mostly folks from the Curriculum Department. The focus of that effort was to reimage machines, a process that essentially wiped them clean and prepares them to start anew. This is a grueling process, but one that was necessary because no remediation software could be pushed out through our servers, as they also were infected. As you might imagine, the work carried into the weekend. We're lucky enough to receive volunteer support from Lynn residents who work for cybersecurity agencies. Through this partnership, we were able to secure an agent on a trial basis from a company called CrowdStrike. The agent prevents the virus from spreading and allows us a mechanism to monitor for future attacks. Installing the agent also requires a manual upload, meaning hands-on the device. We sent the call on Saturday, and nearly 250 LPS employees showed up on Sunday to upload the agent, and I think that's cause for celebration right there. Given the enormity of the problem and the sluggish pace of the remediation, we decided to file a claim through the city's cyber risk insurance policy. This was on Monday. Doing so would allow us to recoup funds expended on the remediation thus far, and to hire a third-party vendor to take this work on. As it happens, the insurance company offers two vendors, one of which is CrowdStrike. With the claim submitted and the proper documents signed and executed, we begun a robust process to address the issue. To be clear, the work that was done on Sunday and days before is incredibly beneficial toward the final solution. It stopped the spread and will speed up the remediation process. As of today, nearly 70% of the Windows-based devices have the agent uploaded. The goal is to get to 100%, obviously. While it was our intention to proceed with CrowdStrike, and I have communicated as much, yesterday we learned that the company could offer, could not offer dedicated service on a timeline that met our needs. Accordingly, on the advice of the insurance company, we moved to partner with Charles River Associates, the other highly regarded insurance company-approved vendor. Full approval was granted this morning, and a dedicated lead specialist of a team of 12 professionals from Charles River Associates was on-site today at 12:30 PM. In the simplest terms, their process is as follows: to stop the spread of the virus, which has already begun in large part, conduct an investigation to determine exposure, if privileged information was compromised, and what information, remediate the issue in full, and then make recommendations to protect against future events of this sort. Certainly, I'm sure folks are wondering how this could happen. Rather than answer and offer an answer to that question, which would be a guess at this point in time, we'll wait for the final outcome from the experts, which will drive prevention efforts going forward. A very close second to student safety is our work in teaching and learning. I'm pleased to say that despite the lack of Internet access, that process has continued. Teachers continue to post on social media, and the stories continue to roll in on how teachers are leveraging resources and exhibiting creativity in ways that are truly impressive. Additionally, we've set up systems to allow for this, set up systems for this, forget that. We've done additional things, but not that. There's some elements of this disruption that cannot be rectified. For example, the high schools were poised to take the ELA MCAS this week online. That clearly cannot happen. We alerted DESI late last week, and paper tests were delivered to schools on Tuesday for admission, administration today and tomorrow, and a makeup on Monday. At this point, to be frank, my optimism for computer-based tests for grades three through eight is pretty low. We've shared this with DESI and are waiting for further instructions. Principals have been directed to plan for paper. In situations such as these, communication, whether rich with good news or rife with bad, is key. Accordingly, there have been all calls to parents, emails to the entire staff, and I'm in communication with principals formally through email at least once, more often than not, twice per day. The deputies are also in text communication as needed. So that's a quick update, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I've also been updating you guys.
I was just about to say that.
Member Capola, then Member Sadoway.
I'm just wondering, how accurate was our inventory list of where all of our equipment was?
My understanding is that it's very accurate. Kevin, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think it is. What we're doing is now, we believe it's, we have inventory lists, because what we did a number of years ago when I came in, we're tagging every device. So when it's deployed, it's like a scan system, so we know where school is. We might not know exactly what classroom it's in, so we can't be that close, because if it was in my classroom this summer, next year it might be in Deb's classroom. So we don't know that. But we know the number of devices, the number of switches, and the number of servers in every building.
Okay, thank you.
Member Sadoway, then Member Castellanos.
I just wanted to reemphasize the fact that we have been updated with the information that you do share with the staff in the school department. Obviously, the recommendations that we're seeking from, is it Charles River, will be important. You know, obviously, you have these huge companies that have these thefts of information and all that stuff, and we don't know if that took place here. So that's a big thing that we should keep in the back of our heads. You know, we, we need to protect, obviously, the information of a student and the family, and we house a substantial amount of information. So I hope we get through this, and it's not a big impact, and we get rolling again. So I appreciate that.
Member Castellanos.
Thank you so much for your report, Superintendent. I have a question about food. So, you addressed it very well. I believe there is a need. I think when we look at communication, miscommunication could happen, you could misinterpret it, I understand that. And I see the efforts with One Mighty Mill being expanded to all secondary schools. What efforts, what, so, we still see the need, so when you still see the concerns, when you hear and see, obviously, through our constituent base, I got mixed reviews, it was, it was pretty, it was pretty exclusive. I seen a lot of different perspectives, a lot of different insights from a lot of different constituents. How do we, so I know we have federal guidelines that we have to follow. There's certain things that we have to, in order to roll out our food program, and there's certain guidelines. What ways, after moving forward, after all that feedback, what is some, so we can just clear it up with the plug, what are some initial, maybe new steps, or what kind of approaches are you, is the district taking to address some of the quality issues? Because I know, I, there was a lot of, I've got a lot of concerns about the quality, and that's something that I know we've been putting a lot of effort. I know Kevin's been working with numerous vendors and figuring out ways to make the food taste better, and there's a lot of effort, there's a lot of communication around that. I know the food has been something that has been highlighted several times since I've been on the seat. Food is a very important aspect to the district, because sometimes some of these meals might be the primary meals of the day. I know from experience that sometimes, you know, my lunch and breakfast at school was it. That's something that I take very seriously. I know my colleagues do, and you guys do, as well, as well as the organizations involved with addressing the food issue. And I think it would be good to kind of talk a little bit about what we can do to keep this ongoing dialogue about how we're improving it.
So I really feel like a big piece of it is the iterative process of feedback. So in the formal presentation, there were slides showing, you know, the percentages of students that liked certain food items. So we're consistently asking kids, what do you like, what do you not like? Knowing full well, as you said, we're operating under federal guidelines, you know, fat content, the things that make, you know, that I like, fat content, salt content, sugar content, that's not there. And so how can we be creative and find things that kids like? I've tasted a number of the meals that are prepared for students, and, you know, they're pretty good. They're pretty good. But, but, you know, if you ask, you know, a fifth grader, do you like wheat bread pizza, they're probably going to say no. Where the salt content and the sauce is low, the cheese is a lower-fat cheese, it's not going to taste like Domino's, or, you know, name the place. And so I think really the path to success here is to continuously, you know, get feedback from kids, find out what they like, and go in that direction. As far as the quality, I mean, I just want to be clear, I don't have any tolerance for food that's spoiled, milk or juice that's spoiled. That should not be happening in our schools. Our kids deserve fresh meals, fresh drinks. And so, you know, Kevin and I have talked about this. That's why we're consistently checking coolers to make sure. But also, you know, if people are reporting that things are spoiled, like, you know, what are, maybe there's something in the presentation, because when we're finding, like, hey, no, this is not, this is not spoiled, it's actually okay. I don't see this as, I just want to be clear in even sharing that, this is not me pushing back on the feedback, this is us thinking about, all right, so why might they say that, even though, you know, our lunch counts, you know, suggest that, you know, there wasn't enough food, or we look, we check the coolers, and everything is fresh, we get milk delivered fresh every day. You know, and then, and then finding ways to work with students to say, look, you come across something that's not good, bring it back. You know what I mean? And like, get another one. If one student reported that a French toast was burnt, okay, bring it back, get a fresh one. You know, and we've got to be flexible around, around students being able to do that. Kevin, I don't know if you want to say more.
I think you summed it up. I mean, I think that, again, you know, the quality of the food is all USDA products, everything comes in, you know, we get commodities from the government, to which every other school district does. So, I mean, I would say, yes, we're doing, and I'm all for feedback. I think feedback's great. You know, I, hopefully it's constructive feedback, and we say, we got 16,000 students, I can't be 16,000 students every single day. And, you know, when I started here, we had one entree at the elementary. We have two now, because my hope is, if they don't like this item, they could at least take that item. And our goal is, if I ever hear, you know, a couple people have called me saying, I heard at XYZ school, maybe they ran out, we go out the next day to double-check that. Now, in some cases, yes, they have not cooked enough product of this, and they ran short at the last lunch, but there was always another available thing. So we talk to the person, you got to keep an eye on that person that's in charge of that kitchen to make sure they cook more. And they're trying to be efficient as well. They don't want to throw lunches away at the end of the day either, but I says, you know, we want to make sure the student have choices. And it's hit or miss, they say, because some days you could say, I think the kids are going to really gravitate towards this item, and they want to go the other way. It's, so it's unpredictable, but in some cases, they can cook more, but when they get down to the last five, six kids in line, and then, you know, you'd have to, you won't have enough time to do, as an example. But we're working on those things, and I always encourage input, and like the superintendent said, if a student's not happy, they have to report it so we can get the input, because we need that feedback. We're continuing to survey students all the time, because as I said, when I did my presentation in December, and we do our final update later on this year, we'll give you some more additional information, is that's my true sense of what's happening in the school. If 75 or 80%, in some cases, when 90% students like an item, I have to assume that that's good. If 50%, it's got to go. And I've already talked to the vendors, I'm not going to have stuff. I think somebody on this committee talked about the three-bean salad. It's, I told them I wanted off the menu. Kids, it's healthy, it's edible, and it's nutritious, and everything else you need, but they're not taking it. So if they're not taking it, why am I serving it? You know, and so, even though it's, some kids might like that, but it wasn't popular dish. So we need to keep focusing on looking at the items to try to get to the majority of our consumers, who are the students, items that they truly like. And as the superintendent said, I've tried some. We're going to be doing the same exact items that were served that night will be brought here for you guys to try as well, just so you can see the exact same things, you know, what we did. And nothing, you know, they took out the pizza out of the box, because at that night, somebody questioned the pizza, and we said, well, here's the box, it was all packed, we just heated it up. This is the item they get at the school. So, I mean, and they, you know, and you can try that as well. So we're not doing anything different, because I, there's no reason to, you know, there's no reason to. And these vendors, obviously, you know, are trying to provide the best product. I mean, we, and you've heard me say it before, the Woburn Street facility is only, this is the second year. They're making salads, fresh fruit, and sandwiches, which just started. Sandwiches weren't even being made last year. So we're getting sandwiches that are made yesterday and here today. It's not a frozen sandwich that a couple of years ago was heated up and served. So we know we have issues at the elementary, and we're exploring all opportunities we can to try to improve that, but the facilities, as we all know, are lacking all the items we need to put a full kitchen in. That would be the ideal situation, have a full kitchen in every elementary, but the reality is, we don't have, that's a huge hindering block at this point.
Yeah, and I know the lunch aids have, you know, been very active, and they, the schools that don't have kitchens, they're very, you know, they've been on the ground. Those are very important inputs as well, when we talk about feedback. I know the lunch, you know, plenty of, in my experiences with my lunch ladies and lunch aids, very important people to me, you know. Those are people that always made sure they took care of my basic need of, you know, make sure I was eating, or they could identify certain things that I'd never realized, you know, I needed extra fruit, or extra stuff. I know there's stuff that people throw away, stuff, not to say extra, but I've always had positive experiences with my lunch aids, and I, and I do, and those, those different, like, level of engagement opportunities, I think you can get a lot of input there as well from our lunch aids in the district, because they work really hard as well, to also provide on the food delivery. But, thank you.
Member Gailey, then Member Nicholson.
I just want to commend you, Kevin. Dr. Topol, I was here on the 14th with Katie, and the parents were able to express themselves. You listened. I, my experience with our food service has always been, if a constituent calls me, I pick up the phone, and I call Kevin and say, Kevin, there's a problem over at this building, and can you check into it? And it's done. It's like, and I don't get a lot of phone calls, but, and people got to use their voice, speak out. So that's all I want. I want people, if you're having a problem with your food, and you don't like it, call me, I'll call Kevin, we'll get it taken care of. That's how I feel about it. And it has worked. It does work. And I think everything was satisfied at the end of that night, I believe. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you. Yeah, really appreciate everyone's openness to feedback and commitment to student nutrition. I think that really comes through, and it's great to be establishing this, these sort of communication and trust with the community. I actually had a question about the computer system issue. Are there other functions that we rely on the computer systems for, in addition to the MCAS, that we need to be making remediation plans for, like, you know, like registrations, or college applications, things like that?
Yeah, so, I mean, you get a real sense for how much you rely on, you know, the virtual world when you don't have it. So I will say that City Hall has been very gracious in allowing us a bank of computers where we've been able to send you payrolls. Important that that process continues. And we've been scheduling clerks from schools to go over, enter, you know, information. A lot of stuff can still be done on your phone. But, you know, whether it's, you know, you need a school verification form done, or, you know, a new student arrived, and we need to get them in the system, or, I mean, you name it. Clerks have been able to rotate at City Hall and go and have time, you know, at a computer to get stuff done. Through the good graces I just learned today of our friends at North Shore, they're allowing us a lab for special educators to go and get work done on IEPs. I mean, the outpouring of support has been really, really incredible. As far as, I mean, yesterday, we had a meeting in this space with all principals and directors, and our data center also went over, you all aren't going to have any paper over there Okay, thank you. But our data specialist went over and printed out alpha lists and homeroom information, so we have all of that information, like, at our hands on paper, in case you don't need to make a phone call or, you know, locate, you know, where's Johnny in Period III? Okay? Normally, we would look on the computer, but now we have an alpha that we can look up on paper. Uh, so, we've been surviving. I mean, requisitions, we've been finding ways over the past week to make it work. Is it ideal? No.
Okay.
It hurts.